Okay, we're ready to start. Councillor Beck is not here. He's out of the province. He's not phoning in because I don't know if he's able to or not able to, but he will not be here tonight. Want to do the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is unceded Mi'kmaq territory. And on your desk, there should be a Moosehead pin. The Moosehead Campaign Day is this Thursday, May 11th, 2023. Is Moosehead Campaign Day. This is an Indigenous-led organization that takes a stand against violence toward women and children and takes practical steps for our collective journey of reconciliation. By where on the patch or the Moosehide pin, I pledge to join. Hashtag Moosehide Campaign Day on May 11th. And I'm encouraging council and all of staff to take action on this day and every day to see, to see an end to violence toward, toward women and children. And to find out how to register and get involved, you just go to the website, www.moosehidecampaign.ca. And as I said, a pin was placed on each desk to wear on May 11th, or like myself, today and therefore, and thereafter. And there is a card which gives some explanation behind the pin. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay, councillor Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. This is more of a point of order or an explanation of maybe even a legal issue. So before we get into all this, I've been thinking about the vote to not investigate the 11 items in the last DCAO's issues provided to council. The city's code of conduct requires councillors to excuse themselves from a vote if they are potentially affected by the vote. So certain councillors, they, they could have voted to dismiss the 11 items and they could have been mentioned in those 11 items. Therefore, by participating in the vote, they had may breached the code of conduct due to a potential conflict of interest. And, and what I'm asking, if, if a councillor has a conflict of interest and participates in a council vote, then the vote may be illegal.
Yeah.
So can-
We're going to ask legal to look into that.
So you're going to ask that for me?
Yeah. Mr. Forbes?
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Do you have a particular day of the vote? Can you get that? Can you email that to our CAO? Those votes that you're talking about?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I'll go through them.
Yep.
It's one of the minutes, but I'll specifically-
But you don't have any declarations of conflict of interest?
No. It's more of a, a legal issue on, on that. Thank you.
Okay. So I have the approval of the agenda. I know councillor Bernard said that he may have to leave because of commitment, previous commitment. He's there all right in number three. Good. I need a motion to go with the agenda. Moved by councillor Ramsay, signed by councillor McKinnon. All those in favor? Okay. So we have the minutes from the adoption of previous draft minutes. Regular meeting, April 11th, 2023. Special meetings, April 20th and 24th, 2023. Public planning meeting, April 25th, 2023. Councillor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. In our special meeting with council on April-
Can I just interject? Can you bring that up under business of, business arising?
Business arising of the minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Don't know. Must be the room. Must be the room. Okay. I need someone to forward a motion to adopt the minutes. Moved by the deputy, sent by councillor Ramsay. All those in favor? Please put your hand up. Business arising out of the minutes. Councillor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. In our special meeting of council on April the 20th, we voted to consider all issues closed. Councillor Twill and I both wanted the 11 issues noted in the BDO report and the issues raised by the last DCAO to be independently investigated. And since council has voted to not investigate these matters, I would like council to release to the public the list of the 11 items referred to in the BDO report and the issues noted by the last DCAOs. As the mayor has said, we have nothing to hide, so, so why hide these items? So, you know, we voted to consider them closed, so I, I just want to put a motion to, to release them.
Okay. So I don't know if we need a motion, but CAO Eleanor, do you want to address that?
Uh, thank you, your worship. And through to councillor Duran, we're currently working through the FOIP process to have those documents released.
Councillor Duran?
Thank you for that. I didn't, I didn't know we were doing that, so if I would have known, I would have not asked this. So, so has it gone to legal to investigate what we can and cannot release? Is that, is that where we're at?
Yeah. CAO Eleanor, that's an operational issue. Can you update us?
Thank you, your worship. And through to councillor Duran. Yes, so we've had our FOIP coordinators have gone through and redacted all the information in there that in fact affects personal privacy and it has been sent to legal on opinion. The instructions to legal is the only information that we want redacted out of there would be in alignment with the Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act and no more.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Twill? Do you want to raise that, sir?
Just to follow up on that, I wasn't aware that, so is this, is this coming from senior management? Is this coming from a standing committee in terms of pursuing this information so that can be released to the public? I have a follow-up question, but that's my first question. Does this come from a, a standing committee or does this come from senior management? Or where did this new revelation come from?
Now, Twill, could you give your second question too, so she can answer?
No, I just premised-
No, no, no. We want to move in line-
Yeah, I know, but it's premised on the answer for the first-
You want, you want a premise. Okay. CAO Eleanor, can you please respond to councillor Twill's first of two questions?
Thank you, your worship. And through to councillor Twill. So it has to come through committee too. So it would go through finance and administration committee because that's where the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act is categorized underneath there. So the plan was from administration that we were going to be recommending that it be released and the redacted versions would be coming through that committee and through to council.
Second question, councillor Twill?
Okay. So again, that's news to me. So it's going back to finance and then the finance committee will do its deliberations and then go from there. My concern I have is because, you know, our solicitors have stated on a number of occasions that their primary priority and responsibilities is protect the corporation. So I'm not so sure, and I'm not trying to be critical, but I'm not so sure it's going to be arms-length, fair and objective analysis. And what's also important is the appearance. So will you be recommending to the finance committee to seek outside counsel? Because our solicitors have been involved and we're looking for an assessment and evaluation that's truly independent of the city's corporation and the city solicitors not independent of the city's corporation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
CAO Eleanor, you as a professional chief administrative officer, I think you have a code of ethics you follow?
That's not the question.
No, no, no. Let me just finish. Let me, hold on. Let me finish. Let me finish. So you have a code of ethics, Mr. Forbes? You're with the Legal Law Society, Prince Edward Island? You have a code of ethics that you must follow? Yes? Eleanor, code of ethics, do you follow?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Yes.
Yes. Okay. So we're going to get an answer?
Yeah, your answer is we'll go back to committee and then we'll take it from there.
Could we go outside for, for legal counsel?
Well, that could be brought to the floor too. Okay. Reports of standing committees of council. Deputy Mayor Yankoff, planning and heritage.
Yeah. Thank you, your worship. The, um, the planning and heritage committee met on May the 1st, as well as the planning board met on May the 1st, and our heritage board met on April 27th, and our design review board met on April 17th. The affordable housing committee did not meet. And all of those meetings, packages are in your package to read, your minutes, et cetera. And we have for this evening eight resolutions for council's approval. And we also have two first readings for site exemptions to review. The other thing I'd like to invite everyone, councillors, the public, staff, tomorrow at noon are our annual heritage day awards. So we will be recognizing some individuals in the community that have done some pretty unique and great heritage, um, things. And also, we will be presenting the Catherine Hennessy Award tomorrow. So it's at noon. You're all invited and we'll have some snacks afterwards as well. If anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
So that's up, deputy in the foyer, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Twill?
Thank you, deputy mayor, for your report. About a couple of months ago, I wasn't able to attend the last month's meeting because I wasn't well. But the month prior to that, I asked the question, was the permit for the proposed Belmont site safe injection? Proposed facility? The premier made a commitment during the election that the permit would be revoked. Can you please tell me, or maybe senior administration in your department, please tell me if the permit was revoked? That's my first question.
Thank you, councillor Twill. I think the way I answered it the last time, this is 100% operational question, so I will refer to senior administrative staff for this because any, anything to do with the safe injection site, nothing came through council, so that was not a council approval. So I will turn that over to CAO Mohammed to address.
Deputy, just to clarify, so we don't issue the permits from council? That's from the office down in the corner of-
No, it's operational.
Okay, okay. CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, your worship. Laurel, did you want to answer this one?
Thank you, councillor Yankoff, through your worship. I don't believe that permit has been revoked. I would have to confirm that. However, the permit was issued. If the province chooses not to proceed, then they can not proceed at their own will if they decide to locate it at a, a different location.
Councillor Matar, sorry about that. Go ahead, councillor Matar.
Great, thank you. Just for a pointed clarification, councillor Twill, I think that the premier announced on, in through the media that the safe injection site would not be going on Belmont Street. It wasn't revoking building permits as far as I could, as I read in the paper. My question is regarding a building permit, as indicated here, that is, are issued through the city's operational unit. Madam Chair, the, when they're issued is, what's the duration of, like their longevity for, how long they're valid for? Is that a year? If, if any homeowner who's doing a renovation of some sort is looking to get a permit and he or she decides not to move forward with the renovation, does that mean the permit, is there a requirement to revoke the permit? Or does it have a one-year lifespan and then it would essentially expire? Or, so is, the question is, is there an obligation to actually revoke something if you're not going to proceed with what it was intended to do?
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you for your question, councillor Matar. No, the expiry, I, correct me if I'm wrong, is one, one year. And after one year, you would just have to reapply. And there's no obligation to contact the planning staff to cancel a permit. It just, it just, it just dies. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Twill? Second question?
Thank you. I read the email from the resident that's concerned with the response from the city's legal, uh, legal firm-
Cox and Palmer?
Cox and Palmer to respond to, I guess, the appeal to Iraq. And, and solicitors respond, responded with an email that upset some of the residents and didn't feel that the response was informed, appropriate, as well as a number of other issues. The concern I have is, from the outset, we were told as a city council that we have nothing to do with this file. We have absolutely nothing to do with it. It was stated here on a number of occasions, we have absolutely nothing to do with this. And now, because of an appeal, I thought the response would have been, well, we've got nothing to do with it. It says right. But if you look at the appeal, according to some of the residents, they, they singled out different sections of the official plan and zoning development bylaw, harmonization being one. And now, all of a sudden, we've got something to do with it. So, so did we have something to do with it from, from the outset? And was council informed that there's possibilities that the city could have been appealed utilizing different sections of the zoning and development bylaw and official plan? And then, yes, in fact, we do have something to do with it. And, and we can be challenged.
Okay.
You know, if, if you look at different sections of the, of the official plan and zoning and development bylaw. So I'm confused.
Yeah.
You know, we were told we had nothing to do with it. But now, we have everything to do with it.
Okay. Okay. Councillor Twill, as a council, we don't have anything to do with it. I'm going to ask the deputy, if we can ask Laurel to answer this question. It's an operational matter. It's not the 10 people and the person here that are responsible for this permit. It's a, that's why you have a bureaucracy, just like the provincial federal government. Is it all right? Go ahead there, councillor Yankoff. Hold on, just one sec. Go ahead.
And yeah, sure. If, if Laurel's familiar with this file, by all means, she can answer it. And if she prefers, we can defer to CAO Mohammed. But we'll start with you, Laurel, if you wish.
Thank you, councillor Yankoff, through your worship. Any permit is appealable under the Planning Act. It doesn't matter whether it's a safe injection site or whether it's a water lot development or if it's a regular single-family dwelling. Any permit is appealable. So whether it's as of right or not, even if it were a rezoning application, it's also appealable. So if an appeal comes in, then we prepare the file, we go to Iraq. The, as far as the official plan goes, there's various interpretations of the official plan where you could apply it to the section you were talking about, about harmonious development. But I mean, there's various sections of the official plan that also would support it in relation to various segments of the population, marginal sections of the population. So I mean, it's how you interpret the plan. We basically look to balance. When we're looking at a report and an application, we try to look at a balanced approach so that the positives or the negatives are outlined and then we weigh those and we basically put forward the best recommendation. In this case, it was as of right. We looked at that when we were reviewing the application and we felt that this was an appropriate zone. It met the requirements of the area and the permit was signed.
Councillor Twill, you had your two points. You can come up in a later resolution. Can we get to the resolutions? CAO Eleanor, could you read the first one? I'm just trying.
Thank you, your worship. Planning and Heritage Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to reinstate the application fees for temporary use variance applications as it pertains to temporary outdoor patios on private properties be approved.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Okay, nine, zero. Next one, CAO. Thank you very much.
Heritage Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the proposed application to designate 267 Fifth Troy Street, PID number 346874, as a heritage resource, be approved to proceed to public consultation, the public consultation phase.
Question's called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. All those against? Zero. Nine, zero. Can I get that one to you?
Heritage Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the proposed application for site development, including a driveway, parking for six spaces and ramp access to the neighborhood property at 15 Richmond Street, PID 339721, be approved.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Thank you. Thank you kindly.
Planning Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the major variance request to reduce the flange yard setback requirement in the low-density residential R2 zone of the zoning and development bylaw from 19.7 feet to 16.6 feet as it pertains to 9 Gay Avenue, PID 362434, to allow the proposed 314-square-foot rear, rear yard addition to the existing single-detached dwelling be approved.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Nine, zero. Doing a good job.
Planning Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by councillor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the major variance request permit as a, as appointment, permit and appointment-based hair salon as a home occupation with a portion of the existing single-detached dwelling at 302 Patterson Drive, PID 804633, be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, hours of operation Monday to Saturday from 10:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. Two, maximum clients permitted on the subject property at any one time be one. Three, maximum client appointments permitted per day is six. Four, maximum employees permitted, one full-time employee, the owner resident of the main dwelling. Five, maximum salon size, 250 square feet or up to 20% of the gross, gross floor area of the main dwelling. main dwelling. Six, parking requirement, three on-site tandem parking spaces, at least 8.5 feet by 18 feet in size, to serve home occupation in main dwelling. And, seven, on-street parking is prohibited.
Question's called. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. All those against? Zero. Nine zero. Thank you. Thank you.
Planning Resolution Number Three, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix C, approve site-specific exemptions of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw to permit one floating structure use on the water lot located in the Water Lot Commercial Zone at the southerly terminus of Prince Street, P I D 335430. Two, floating structures and four float homes on the water lot located in the Water Lot Commercial Zone at the southerly terminus of Great George Street, P I D 335307, be approved, subject to the signing of a development agreement with the details and criteria outlined in the Planning Report 2020-23-05, May 6B-3.
Okay. Councilor Twill has a question. Councilor Twill, go ahead.
Thank you. I attended the public meeting, and there were questions from the residents. And they were questioning whether, were they given more time to be able to ask more questions to collaborate with the planning department? Was that time allotted? That's my first question. Secondly, was there any other residents that reached out to the planning department to offer their views or their, you know, questions or any concerns that they might have?
Deputy?
Thank you, Councilor Twill. Any communication with any residents would be in your package. So, if anyone else did reach out, it would be in your package. And as for whether or not the city staff decided to extend the opportunity for people to provide their information, that's a great question. I think I will refer that to Ms. Thompson.
Laurel, can you give us some insight?
Unfortunately, I haven't been involved with this file, so I'm really not able to comment on that, whether there was additional time allotted for comments on the water lot application. I know that they did follow the process through the public meeting, but I don't know if they extended the comment time following the public meeting.
Okay. Councilor McCabe?
Thank you. As part of the planning, I know that there is going to be discussion where they had to look at timelines when they had to get stuff collected in order to get stuff prepared for us to have in our package. And I know, and I'm maybe speaking in your place, Councilor Yankoff, Deputy Mayor, you can speak to it, but we are going to look at moving times anyway. So, there will be more, that was more to accommodate me having a challenge to get to the meeting at that time, where it should increase opportunity for more time lapse. But in order for them to gather the information and have it prepared, my understanding was that they weren't able to extend the time.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, Councilor McCabe. We had our mics on at the same time. I was about to say almost the same thing. And hopefully, Councilor Twill, that would satisfy your questions on that, that we are working towards, you know, streamlining and having, you know, a more cohesive process for the residents and having more community engagement, because we're hearing them and we understand that people are looking for a little bit more information and ways for us to continue to do better.
And Madam Chair, can I also add that Ellen Catani, who was doing some contract work for us, that she told me, and Laurel, you can correct me if this is wrong, but any letters, emails that came in after the date, they are submitted as part of the process, but it's very clearly indicated that these came in after the deadline. And if you look at the I RAC order from this past week, the City of Charlottetown versus Sandalwood Development, or the Sandalwood Project, one of the prepositions was that the appellant stated that that door of leaving it open for anyone to object or to support it should be looked at, because it's unfair to the, I shouldn't say unfair, it does question the process. Is that all right to ask her that? Is that all right, Laurel? Do you know what I'm asking? I'm referring to?
Yes, your worship. There's a legislative process which we have to follow. And once that time closes, technically, we can't add those letters, but we do include them. But we are very clear that they were accepted by the department following that mandated time that we indicate in the public notification.
But as a department, I believe you will have to revisit that issue, because it was one of the prepositions put out by the appellant. And I believe I RAC agreed with it, because he's allowed to subdivide the property.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah.
Okay, Councilor Twill, second question?
I'll be voting in favor of the resolution. Ever since, communities had an opportunity to experience the food docks down on the waterfront. I think it's become a major focal point in our city. It seems to be a big attraction, and it's added to the ambiance and all the activities down in that area. So, I think it's good development from a seasonal perspective, and people are really enjoying it.
Okay. Deputy? Question? Question's called. All those in favor? All those against? Nine zero. Do you have that? Can I get that? Thank you. Thank you kindly.
Planning Resolution Number Four, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix C, approve site-specific exemptions in the light industrial M1 zone of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, as it pertains to 40 Riverside Drive, P I D 839322, to allow for the proposed waste-to-energy building to be constructed on the subject property, be approved, subject to the signing of a development agreement with a stipulation that would require both the proposed building and site designed to undergo and obtain approval through the design review process. The site-specific exemption would include the following. To increase the maximum allowable building height in the M1 zone from 12 meters to 35 meters, to permit a new waste-to-energy building. To exempt the proposed facility from Regulation 4.7.1A building height, to increase the maximum allowable height for rooftop mechanical, from 3 meters to 38 meters above the maximum permitted building height in the M1 zone, to allow for a smokestack measuring 50 meters in height. To exempt the proposed facility from Regulation 4.7.1B building height, to reduce the maximum setback for rooftop mechanical, from 3 meters to 2 meters from the roof edge.
Councilor Twill?
Once again, this was a major topic at the public planning meeting, and a lot of good discussion. I thought some of the residents had some really good questions and suggestions, some that I truly believe in as well. One of the questions that came up was, was there an opportunity to have any type of this development located in an industrial park, as opposed to on Riverside Drive? It's unfortunate that we're going to, you know, we're going to approve this here tonight. I mean, I understand why. I understand the rationale. They need to be contemporary in their methodology and the services they provide, and they do, you know, great things for the city. And it's something that's truly needed. But from, I don't know, from an aesthetics or from an ambiance perspective, it's too bad that some of this development, or all this development, couldn't be in an industrial park. But nonetheless, we're going to vote on the resolution here tonight. It's too bad from a planning perspective, it wasn't situated in an industrial park.
Okay. Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Okay, nine zero. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Planning Resolution Number Five, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the following requests pertaining to 257 Mount Edward Road, P I D 390674, 261 Mount Edward Road, P I D 390682, 265 Mount Edward Road, P I D 390708, 269 Mount Edward Road, P I D 390757, and P I D 390690, be approved to proceed to public consultation. Approve a development concept planned. Amend Appendix A, future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan from low-density residential to comprehensive planning area. Amend Appendix B, comprehensive development area, parcels, and permitted uses of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw to allow for mixed-use residential development consisting of apartment buildings and townhouses. Amend Appendix G, zoning map of the Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw from R2S, low-density residential single, to CDA, comprehensive development area, for a portion of P I Ds 390757, 390708, 390690, 390682, and 390674. And consolidate 257 Mount Edward Road, 261 Mount Edward Road, 265 Mount Edward Road, 269 Mount Edward Road, and parcel with P I D 390690.
Okay. Did you all get that? I think you missed one number there. Councilor Twill? Now, this is going to a public consultation. Okay? This is a public meeting.
That's what the question said.
Yeah, this is not the final vote. Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, as we see by the resolution to go through the public consultation process, this is a major, major development in our city. And I think it's important that the residents know that our public consultation process is equally important. How we communicate that to the community is important. I believe there's two ads in the newspaper. It's on social media. Letters go out to residents within 100 meters. So, I just want to make sure that we're firing all cylinders to make sure that the residents in that general area get the information, and they're able to come to the meeting and participate. And anything to improve communications with the residents to let them know what's taking place.
Thank you. Councilor Dron?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilor Twill. You know, this is a major, major development change. I don't know how many, you know, variances or what zoning, you know, you'd have to sit down and check the boxes off, how many things they're asking for. But only to have 100 meters to people be involved, that's barely like three houses up each way. I mean, what can we do as a council or as a city? I know we put it on our website, we take two ads out in the paper, but I know a lot of people that don't get the paper. You know, they don't have the internet. And then, when this is approved or denied, they're going to come saying, well, I wasn't informed. You know, so for the counselor to go around to 500 or more houses in the surrounding area that are affected by this, you know, we got to come up with a better plan. And I'm asking, before the public meeting, that we implement this plan. Like, how are we going to tell the people? That's a big issue. You know, I'm getting it a lot through that side of the road. It's not in my area, but it's right across the street. And people are concerned where the development's coming from and what we're going to be faced with, with the traffic concerns. So, you know, I ask our C A O or staff to come up with a better than just 100 meters. I've asked it a few years ago, and it just kind of went by the wayside. But now, you know, this area, you know, everybody's going to be infected on Mount Edward Road and Bradley Point Road. So, I'm just asking to come up with something better than the 100 meters. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Dron. And you're not the first to ask about this, and I know this has come up in our Planning and Heritage Committee meetings, on how can we better communicate to the public on anything and everything that we do. The struggle that we have right now is that there is a succinct process that is outlined in the Planning Act that we have to follow. And we open ourselves up to appeals and losing appeals if we don't follow what the process is. So, in order for us to better communicate and add maybe 300 meters instead of 100 meters, we have to first change the Planning Act. Correct me if I'm wrong. Laurel?
Deputy Mayor Yankoff, both the Planning Act and the zoning and development bylaw outlines the process that has to be followed for public notification.
Okay. Councilor McCabe?
I think we've discussed this in past practice. I do agree with Councilor Dron, when, you know, we have to find better ways to reach our residents of the city. And I know, you know, we have options where, and it's through communications. I think it's really not under planning, but, you know, it's good to note that we might need to look at, we can sign up to receive snow alerts, for example, where people are getting texts all over the place, letting us know that the snow is going to be removed. But if I'm, you know, there's got to be ways in today's world where if I'm a resident of Ward 6 or Ward 4, and this is going to impact me, that there's a way to sign up for anything in that area, that something comes out to them to say, this is what's happening in your area, and whatever, and really encourage people to get involved. We're a world of technology. We have to be able to do better. So, I do support that idea. And I think that's something, wherever communications falls, that should be discussed.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, and thank you, Councilor McCabe. And I agree with you, and I also agree with Councilor Dron. But perhaps maybe city administration can speak to us on what is the process for us to make these additional communication changes, so that we are, you know, letting the residents know. But at the same time, we're going to need to be consistent on that, or we will open ourselves up to I RAC appeals for not following the same process on each situation. So, perhaps, Laurel, you could speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mary Yankoff. The process, whether it would be digital notifications or if it's written notifications, my thoughts on that would be that we would still have to follow the process in the bylaw. So, if you lived within 100 meters of the subject property and notification was required, whether we send it as a written notification or a digital notification, we'd only be able to send it to people within that radius. That's why we also post notices on the property. We put newspaper ads in the newspaper, and we also use social media, the city's website. So, we do try to reach people in many different ways. It's, I agree, it's always, it's impossible to reach everyone, but we do do our best. And hopefully, by reaching people with those various mechanisms, it also generates word of mouth in the neighborhood, so.
Councilor McCabe?
And I think we still, like Councilor, Deputy Mayor said, we still have to follow the rules and regulations to follow our planning process. I think this would be a supplement to that, so that we can ensure that we're trying. It's just another means to reach people. And people would have that responsibility on themselves to sign up if they want to be notified about what's happening in their area. It's just another tool for communication. It's not a supplement to what we already do.
Okay, Councilor Twill, second time.
You know, if you look at the west side of Mount Edward Road, when you begin at the bypass, all the ways down to Velvet Air Avenue, on that side, there's no infrastructure for pedestrian traffic, for cycling traffic, something that is truly safe. I mean, the standard today is eight feet in width or 10 feet in width. And I think it's something that we're going to have to look at. Again, beginning, coming off the bypass, all the ways down to Velvet Air Avenue, because it's just not safe. I know a lot of the residents in my respective district, they can't even get across the street, because there's no sidewalk on that side, can't even have a crosswalk, so the kids can cross over to Pine Drive to commute to the elementary school. So, you know, it's great that we're approving all this development, but then what happens later is then, you know, the battle's on for infrastructure. And if we're going to be planning a development of this magnitude, I also think we need to look at the required infrastructure, public works, water and sewer, all of those prerequisites. And hopefully, this time around, we'll be able to, you know, take advantage of the 10% green space, as opposed to, you know, sometimes developers, and I'm not saying these particular developers, but sometimes developers want to maximize every square footage. And I think green space, I'm a strong advocate for green space. I didn't support the elimination of the green space at the corner of the elimination of the green space at the corner of Towers Road and Mount Edward Road. And I think Counselor Dron felt the same way. So these are very important prerequisites that have to be taken into consideration as well.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor Twill, and excellent points. And, you know, with the anticipation of 18 to 23 additional thousand people going to be living in the City of Charlottetown in the next 10 years, we have to do hard things. And one of them is supporting our developers. But at the same time, we also, as a city, have to ensure, like you said, having the act of transportation and the other services to go with it. So you're absolutely right. We have to look at what we do is committees stay out of our silos and ensure that there is sidewalks, and maybe that becomes part of the development agreement. But, so, I hear you, and we all have to know that, yeah, we've got some difficult things to do over the next several years.
Deputy, I think it'll be a good read for all councillors to read the IRAC order of the city versus Saddlewood Development versus the City of Charlottetown. It talks about, we need to address density before adopting a new revised official plan, because I brought that up with Eleanor, CAO Eleanor, this morning, that we have to do that sooner than later because of the increase in population. Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Okay, zero. Got another one there? CAO? Oh, this is the first meeting? Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're ready for that. Yep. Here we go.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is for zoning and development bylaw PH-ZD-2. A bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw by amending Appendix C, approve site-specific exemptions of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw to prevent one floating structure use on the water lot located at Water Lot Commercial Zone at the southerly terminus of Prince Street, PID 335430, and two floating structures and four float homes on the water lot located in the Water Lot Commercial Zone at the southerly terminus of Great George Street, PID 335307. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw PHZD-2-068, as it pertains to the water lots at the southerly terminus of Prince Street and the southerly terminus of Great George Street, as attached, be read the first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall pass. Pass. Okay, nine zero.
God, I don't know where to write it on that one.
Just right here. But I thought we had to do the second time, just say, well, shall I carry? Or is that the second reading? That's the second reading.
That's just first today.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. To adopt bylaw PH-ZD-2-069, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw by amending Appendix C, approve site-specific exemptions in the light industrial M1 zone of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, as it pertains to 40 Riverside Drive, PID 839322, to allow for the proposed waste energy building to be constructed on the subject property. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw PHZD-2-069, as it pertains to 40 Riverside Drive, as attached, be read the first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Okay. Is that it, Deputy? Thank you very much, Deputy. Okay, next order of business is economic development, economic tourism and development, cultural development. Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, Your Worship. The Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee met on April the 20th. Minutes are included in your package. The Arts Advisory Board did not meet, as the new committee has not yet been appointed. There's no resolutions for your consideration, however, there's a few departmental highlights I'd like to point out. Mayor Brown and staff recently attended the Charlottetown Airport Authority Annual Public Meeting. YYG Charlottetown Airport is leading Atlantic Canada Air Travel Recovery, almost 342,000 passengers in 2022, which was 89% of the 2019 levels. The City Hall Newcomer Open House will be held next Tuesday, May 16th. This event, which is open to all residents of Charlottetown, is being hosted in coordination with the Immigration, Immigrant and Refugee Services Association, PEI. If able, council members are strongly encouraged to attend. 2023 cruise ship season has officially started, and the arrival of the Holland Americas Zendam on April 26. And the 2023 season is scheduled to be the largest cruise season on record with 91 ships, with over 148,500 passengers expected to arrive to our city. Staff recently participated in the Tourism Industry Association in Canada's Tourism Town Hall, the town hall which is traveling across the country, provided tourism industry stakeholders with a forum to better understand efforts on national and local tourism issues, as well as an opportunity to open dialogue, discussion, and constructive debate. Mayor Brown and staff recently attended the East Coast Music Awards Festival and Conference in Halifax, where the event hosting rights were officially handed over to Charlottetown following a successful municipality-led bid. The event will be held in Charlottetown next year from May 1st to the 5th. The city recently bid on and secured the hosting rights for the 2024 Event Atlantic Summit. The summit is an annual gathering and event professionals and stakeholders committed to fostering the event industry in Atlantic Canada. And event hosting in Charlottetown continues to remain vibrant. We recently welcomed the Oyster Cup Hockey Tournament, Maritime Junior Sea Hockey Championship, Physical and Health Education, Canada National Conference, and the PEI Festival of Wines. If anyone has any questions for myself or Mr. Long, we'd be happy to answer for you.
Counselor Dron?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counselor McKinnon, for your report. I'm just wondering, you know, I was on economic development a few years ago, and, you know, my wife and I, and we went up to Summerside and took in a concert there and had a bite to eat. And you see a half Charlottetown up in Summerside, you know, going to the concert. Mind you, we were pretty old people that were there. But I'm just wondering, you know, if you go back to your committee and the manager, to look at the aspect of getting a concert or somebody, you know, it doesn't have to be huge, just to get people out. When we attended, you got to see a lot of old friends up there, and, you know, you go and you socialize and you hear some music. And it always seems that we're going to one or two places up in Summerside. And I know we have fantastic arenas here. I spent all weekend in the Carey Complex. You know, my grandson was playing hockey, the rinks are looking great. And even the East Link Center, I mean, it's a great place for a concert. I'm just wondering, you know, we're hosting a lot of events, but I'm just wondering if we can put this on the agenda to see if we can get some more entertainment, if that was possible. Thank you.
Your Worship, through the chair, concerts are always a highly sought-after industry with respect to driving livelihood in the community and tourism and economic impacts. One of the challenges that we have in Charlottetown is indeed the impacts of the venue itself. If you are familiar with the concert industry, East Link Center is able to host a certain level of concert, but because it's a load from bottom up, because the hang of the infrastructure, the steel is lower than most buildings, because of the flow of traffic behind stage, et cetera, it restricts us in what we can host and what promoters are interested in bringing it to town. If you look at Credit Union Place in Summerside, it's a state-of-the-art building, which has, of all of the things which we currently don't. So there has been some activity happen there, and there will continue. We're working on a couple of files right now, but there's a certain level that we need to focus on, given the challenges that we have. And if you spoke to anyone in the concert industry, they would quickly make you aware of those. From an outside perspective, again, there's been some challenges around the event grounds. It seems that a lot of music events in the summer, larger ones, will go to the Cavendish Beach area, and you recently heard about their expansion, and it's a direct result of having that infrastructure in place, being a full-service concert venue. So it is a good point. People are definitely interested to bring this type of activity to town, and staff are working hard to try to make that happen. But we definitely face some challenges that impact the outcome.
Do you want to follow up there?
No, that's a good explanation, yeah. I just, you know, there's challenges. I guess I will respond. I mean, there's challenges, I understand that. But just, you know, you're doing so well of hosting other events. If we could just take a look at this and what we could do, you know, if there's something at the events ground that we could put in, or something at East Link Center, you always say, you know, if it's down going up, if there's something we can put in the ceiling, like the Federation Center. You know, I attended a couple of concerts at the East Link Center, and it was terrific. You know, Bryan Adams was there one time, and it was great. So maybe if we could just look at something like that, just to get us on the path of doing, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you there, Mr. Long, and it was a good time there in Halifax for the East Coast Music Awards. It's going to be a better time next year in 2023, May 1st to the 5th. Mark it in your calendar. Okay. Environment and Sustainability, Counselor Terry Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. The Environment Sustainability Committee, Your Worship, or Committee, met on April the 19th, in the minutes in everyone's package. There is no resolutions for tonight, Your Worship. But I will point out a couple of highlights. This month, Environment Sustainability will be hosting public events, including the annual Business Tree Challenge. This year's participants are from Bio Vectra, Grant Thornton, McGinnis Cooper, Sable Arc, Stuart McKelvey, Invesco, and Upstreet. These businesses, Your Worship, cover the cost of the trees and engage in a hands-on team-building event. So we're pretty pleased with that. The Department will also host an Arbor Day event in Victoria Park. We're expecting 120 students from Spring Park School, Prince Street School, and Parkdale School, Your Worship, to participate in tree planting and other interactive activities about the environment and nature. So, good, good, good program. The other issue, Your Worship, is the city's annual street and park tree planting program will begin later this month, with around 140 new trees being planted citywide. And also, Your Worship, residents can request a street tree for future planting in the city right of way, near their house if they wish, by clicking onto the Environment Sustainability tab on the city website. They can request a tree. So, just wanted to get that news out there. So, Department's working very hard. And so, Your Worship, that's just some highlights. And like I say, there's no resolutions. Thank you.
Counselor Dron?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you for your report, Counselor Bernard. I'm just wondering about an update. One of my residents called me just before I was coming into the meeting, and he asked me about the stump removal program. And I said, well, we had put 250 in our budget, and we were looking for the province to work with us and match it. But he tried to tell me that it wasn't going ahead. And I said, well, I sit on the committee, and, you know, we were looking into it. Would you have any update of the program? Is it going ahead, or where we're at? I know the city is doing a great job of picking trees up from the side of the road, and a lot of residents are so excited, they, you know, they called me and they said, is this true? And I said, yeah, our Public Works Department is going around picking up trees that were down in Fiona. So then the next part of the question is, are you coming back for my stump? And I'm just sitting there saying, well, listen, I think we're negotiating with the province right now, but I'm not sure. I'll have to ask. So, do you have any report on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dron. I kind of do. So you're right, Public Works is picking up any of the Fiona debris that's left over from last fall. People are putting that out curbside, I believe, until the end of June, they'll be able to pick that stuff up. That's correct, yeah. Had a meeting with the province actually Friday, so I have to have a meeting with staff. There's some, I think there's a couple of misinformation, misinterpretation of what they're saying, and what our staff is telling me, or what we're hearing. A lot of the information has been flown by email, so I met with them Friday, and I will be meeting with staff. The stump removal, right now, as it stands today, we will be removing any stumps on city property. I did talk to the province also about matching the 250 on Friday. They will, they're looking to get back to me on that, so they're having their discussions. And I know time is of the essence, and things start to dry up, and we like to get rid of them. But there has to be some criteria put in place on the stump, too, and that has to be worked out. We're kind of looking, the whole idea of this was, there's some really huge stumps in people's backyards and private that are costing $2,000 and $3,000 to remove. So it's, what we're thinking of, it's like a grant program. And it's a possibility between the province and the city, when we combine their money, that we can help with that cost. It may not cover it all, but I mean, at least it'll help. And that's what we're looking to do. So as of Friday, they hadn't given me an indication either way, but they said they will get back to me. Thank you.
Okay, just one sec. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Like I said, he just called me when I was coming down, and I had no idea. I said, look, alls I do is I'll ask a question. And I appreciate that. I mean, you know, anything to give people, you know, a lot of older people, they were completely devastated with the amount of trees. I mean, Sherwood has a huge amount of trees, and they just don't know where to start, right? So, you know, this guy said, well, you know what, I heard a company come in with the Red Cross help. And I said, well, look, I'm not, you know, I don't know about that program, but, you know, you can call them. But at least if it's still up in the air, I can gladly call them back tonight and say that it's still in the works, we may do it, you know, because he was pretty devastated there today. But thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Counselor Twill?
Thank you. I too certainly look forward to an update, as, you know, the request from the province for an additional 250,000. I have a lot of residents that are very concerned about these huge tree trunks in their backyards. And like Counselor Dron, it's virtually impossible for these folks to be able to afford to have these tree trunks removed. So I'm all in favor, and hopefully, we can get an update soon as possible. My question tonight is regarding bus shelters. I know that over the last year, I've been lobbying for a couple of bus shelters, one on St. Peter's Road, Gower, close to Gower, and the other is DeVar Court, in between DeVar Court and Queen's Court in the back. Just wondering, is there any progress being made on purchasing of bus shelters? I had some impression during the budget process that we were going to be purchasing 10 bus shelters, but it wasn't that. It was for seating in the existing bus shelters, and unfortunately, the message wasn't conveyed. So just wondering where you're at in terms of purchasing new bus shelters.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. So two things. One, the 250,000 that council passed in the budget, if the province doesn't match, that's a discussion that, you know, whether we want to move on that 250 or not, because right now, it's with the matching dollars. So if we don't get that matching dollars, that'll be another conversation for council to see if we want to at least disperse that. The bus shelters, well, one, I'm surprised you didn't look after it when you were chair of this committee for two years. But anyway, there's 15,000 out there. It is for the benches. And we're looking at purchasing new shelters, but not yet. And they will be part of the Invest in Canada infrastructure program, that we will be able to get some funding from that. So we're waiting for that program to open up, to be able to put in the requests for more shelters. Thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
Didn't appreciate your cheap shot. That was a cheap shot. Do you know what? No, 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 just let me finish. Let me finish. That was a cheap shot.
No, okay.
And I'm going to call, yes, it was.
Counsel.
I work with staff. Staff said that in order to purchase bus shelters, it costs $10,000 each. And she said, we would purchase a number of them at one time as opposed to one. So I said, okay. I was patient, and I said, I would wait. So I was under the impression, told by staff, that we're going to purchase them this year. And that didn't come to fruition because there were miscommunication.
Okay, I just asked a question. Why didn't you look after it? You had to manage for two years. I just asked a question.
I told you, I told you that staff said we weren't going to purchase individual bus shelters at the time because it costs $10,000 each. They said it would be cheaper to purchase 10 or more, in bulk. And that's why I went with the.
And that's what we're doing. And that's what we're doing.
I went, let me finish, okay? I went with the recommendation of staff, all right?
So am I.
So you're wondering why? So that's why, okay? Don't you think for one minute that if I could have done something about it, I certainly I would have done something about it?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir. Council Bernard, just finish it.
We're taking the advice of staff.
Yeah, good.
We're taking the advice of staff.
Just like I did.
Okay. Good, good, good. Hey, let's just relax. Okay. Economic tourism, that's done. Environment, shh, relax, relax, relax. Hey, whoa, whoa. Strategic priorities, communications, and intergovernmental cooperation. And the deputy is presenting the report tonight because Counselor Beck is not here. Your Honor.
Go ahead. There we go. Thank you, Your Worship. The Strategic Priorities, Communications, and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee report is in your package. And we met on April the 27th, and the draft minutes, of course, are in your package. I did just want to bring to your attention this amazing little document that you can find on the website, as well as there's some hard copies around. And it's the Community Report, and it's under Annual Reports on the website. But it's got some great little tidbits, highlights more than 75 projects and initiatives, and looks ahead at some of the other city's upcoming priorities. So it's a great, it's a great read. Share it on your socials, share it with your residents, and hopefully everyone's had a chance to read it. And we have one resolution this evening for your consideration. And I will do my best to answer any questions as I pinch it for Counsel Beck. Thank you.
Any questions? Deputy, I don't know if I spoke to you, but this was in on Saturday's Guardian. The EIA issue bill has been put on hold. And I think that what we have to do as a council is try to reach out to Lyle Skinner, who was formerly in Senator Griffin's office. And I'd like to reach out to her also, maybe bring her in when Counselor Beck gets back and discuss this and try to find a path forward. So that's just something we want to add to the public record. And great read. It is, right, charlottetown.ca forward slash annual report. Lot of good information. First resolution, CAO Eleanor.
Strategic Priorities, Communications, and Intergovernmental Cooperation Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor John McElire. Be it resolved that the City of Charlestown accepts the highest-scoring proposal from Advanus in the amount of $31,815 excluding taxes and related expenses to develop the 2023 Community Survey per file number 2023-11, and that the total cost of the project in the amount of $31,815 be funded from the 2023-2024 operating budget, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for that, Counsel Yankoff. Your Worship, when I was Chair a few years ago, is this the same program that we're sending up for all the residents to answer questionnaire and prioritize and everything?
Correct.
Okay, because that first one turned out fantastic.
Yeah, and if you look in the back of the resolution, you'll see how many consultant firms submitted bids to do this survey. Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And thank you for pitch-hitting Deputy Mayor. I'm just wondering, was this a local firm? I know there's about 10 of them in there. And is this the mail-out survey that's going to go out to the residents that come back to, you know? You know, I know Counsel Ramsey thought it was great, but, you know, it's going to be a $35,000 survey. So I'm, you know, I just don't know about spending that money. I think the survey is good when the election comes around, if they want you in or not. I just don't see the benefit of it. And I never seen the benefit of it last time, but I could be mistaken. But getting back to my original question, is this a local company or is a local company involved? I don't see their names there that are local. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Duran. Carly's not here, is she?
Carly's not here.
Okay. So maybe CAO Mohammed could speak to this? Because I know we did have discussion about this in committee.
CAO Eleanor.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counselor Duran. This is, I believe, it's an Alberta company who won the request for qualifications. As you can see on the back of the report, there was a number of firms that were analyzed, including local and non-local firms. Really, the purpose of the community survey is to tie into Council's strategic plan that was developed. As part of the strategic plan, there's going to be key performance indicators that are developed to know if we're successful in implementing the strategic plan. Those key performance indicators are going to come through Council to agree on first. And then those will be used, the survey will be used to measure if we're actually being successful in gaining ground of what Council's goals and objectives were in the strategic plan. So that's the purpose of the community survey.
Counsel Dran, you want to follow up? Counsel Twill.
Thank you. I have a question for the CAO. It has, oh, sorry.
It's not her, yeah.
Yep. And as CAO pointed out, the scores are on the back of the page, but it doesn't break down how the rating was done. Doesn't break down as the, what the prerequisites were in the ratings and how the committee or senior staff arrived at that ratings. So could that be explained as to how, you know, for example, this particular firm get 85? How did they arrive at 85? What was the breakdown in terms of the ratings? And what were the indispensable prerequisites?
Deputy.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Twill. Maybe we will ask CAO Mohammed to speak to this, and if there is a way for us to basically, I mean, see the work, see how it was evaluated.
CAO Eleanor Mohammed.
Thank you, Your Worship, through to Counselor Twill. So generally, the evaluation is included in the request for proposal itself, so firms know when they're applying, and submitting their proposals, how they're going to be evaluated. So I don't have a copy of the request for proposal here with me tonight, but that is something that we could share amongst Councils so you can see what the evaluation method was for this.
But CAO Eleanor, if you look at, one criterion would be price, correct? So I think Advanus is the lowest price. So that'd be a check-up, check that box. It's not, 31,000? Okay, it's 29,000. The lowest is Nerativ, is it? Yeah. And they come in at 81.85, but it was second lowest. So it is in the mix. Counsel Twill, second question.
Yeah. Well, with all due respect, I think the rating system and the methodology of the rating system should have been illustrated in the background information. Information, I mean, that's what we've been doing lately. So I think it's important to have that information so we can actually look at how you arrived at these different numbers, whether it's 85 or 60 or 68, 68. How did you arrive at these decisions in terms of your rating? I think it's important that that's illustrated in the background information so Council can truly make an informed decision.
Okay. Counsel McCain.
Reading just ahead of where their breakdown is. They're indicating in the report that it was based on the experience, expertise individually, as well as a project team. The company successfully completed comparable municipal community surveys for a wide-range Canadian municipalities. I'm assuming that's probably a grandiose summary of kind of some of the breakdown that was used for the RFP. But if you're looking for specifics, I'm sure they can show that to you. Again, we did spend a lot of money trying to provide a vision for the city. We gathered input from our residents for a strategic plan, which helps keep us, as well as staff, geared towards future goals and a vision for this city. So anything we can do to make sure that we are doing what we've set out to do makes sense.
Okay, question? Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against. Okay, Counselors Duran and Twill against, and Counselor Beck not here. So 72. Okay, is that it, deputy? For your report? Thank you kindly, thank you. Okay. Counselor John McElair, Board Seven, Finance, Administration, Tandron, whole gamut.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Finance, Audit, and Tandering Committee met Wednesday, May 3, 23. The minutes from that meeting have been circulated. Couple of highlights that are in here, talk on this evening, amongst other things, I'm sure. There was the work done by the staff. I know Sue Fraser was a big part of getting the new grants bylaw policy updated, which, you know, I trust you've had time to review. The new grant requests, you can see what the recommendation was that came to Council, or that are coming from the Finance Committee. And just by way of, by way of kind of back information, the operating budget, you know, the time and effort within the operating budget, like we had, there were basically a dozen requests for new money this year. And, you know, those requests totaled, new asks, if you will, you know, totaled at 1 point, little, I think around 1.8 million. So the, you know, committee had some hard decisions to make, very good requests. Also had to balance that with the core services that we as a city have to fund first, you know, not the least of which is police, fire, parks, and on it goes. However, we didn't have, we didn't have the money to fund all the requests, and we had to make a decision. And the decision was to allocate $500,000 total towards new requests. And that's in addition to the grants that we've done in past years. So we didn't give any of those existing grants allocations up. So having said that, there's the, you can see in your minutes what grants that we said yes to and what we've recommended from the Finance Committee, what we've said yes to and what we said no to. Now, and what we've, with an allocation of $500,000 for new grants, we've got in front of you tonight recommendations for around 306,000 of that to the various requests that you have before you. And there may be, I expect, going to be discussion and questions, perhaps debate, you know, on this, on this grant requests. So maybe that's enough for now to open it up to, I'm sure, questions and from Council?
Counsel McCain. Counsel McCain.
And maybe it's just because I've moved to the tablet, not the paper copy, and I'm struggling to find, I see all the reports and stuff on the individual new. Do you know where the breakdown of what we recommended via committee? What page that sits on in our package? Okay, thank you. I just want to have that page.
What is it?
Page 513.
Oh, is it? Okay, Counsel Twill. Question on the report?
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
The work that was done, we're going to repeal the existing grants policy and replace it. Can you tell me, before we actually end the discussions, what changes were actually made to delete some of the sections in the old grants policy and the new additions that you did make?
Thank you, Counsel Twill, for that clarification. And I'd maybe ask either Eleanor or Sue, CAO, Sue, to speak to that, Sue Fraser?
Sue Fraser.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'd, Counsel Twill, to you. I don't have the actual markup in front of me, but if you want to wait a moment, I can go to my office and get the marked-up version so you can see the actual differences. But if you have specific questions about sections of either the policy or the bylaw, hopefully I can speak to the specifics.
Okay. From a generalization perspective, I just, you know, like, were the changes and additions and deletions, were they significant? And, you know, just maybe if you can speak to it, we can get the information from you tomorrow. I don't want you to go to your office now. I'm just trying to understand it.
Your Worship, would you like me to?
No, you can, you can speak to it. But the grants policy, the grants bylaw came into effect 2018, right? It was the policy that was 2012.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
That's correct. So through to you, Counsel Twill. The grant policy, if you look at the new policy document as compared to the old one, a lot of its formatting changes where we're talking about, like, the format is much more clear now because it speaks to the statement, it speaks to a purpose, it gives relevance back to sections, relevant sections of the Municipal Government Act in the third section. The definitions are pretty much all the same as before. But we added into both the policy document and the bylaw direct references to our strategic plan. So we're tying both of them back to measurable things that are being articulated in our strategic plan so that when we're considering anything that's coming our way, we're outlining where it relates to the work of the city and how it ties into our different objectives in the strategic plan. So there's a lot, it looks like a lot of difference in the policy document, but it really just more clearly articulates language around the strat plan, the application process, and like, funding limits and all that type of thing. All that language is basically the same as before.
Okay. Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you for your report, Counsel McElire. And the reason, you know, I sit on finance, and the reason why I'm okay to move these forward, because I was under the belief that we could discuss it at Council here. You know, the policy and procedures that we're always talking about, where do the numbers come from? Like, where does the numbers come as we look at Blooming House? They have a certain amount they've asked for, we allow them a certain amount. You know, the house down the road, whether it be Bedford McDonald or, you know, other houses in that type of field. You know, is there a set limit at that? That's what I was looking for when we wanted to see the grants bylaw. Is there limitations that anyone can ask for? You know, here we sit here and we say, okay, let's give the Confederation Center 200,000. I said, look, I don't agree with that because we have parts in our areas, you know, our parks or side. parks or sidewalks that we're not getting the money, but where did that number come from? And why are we giving it to them and not so the next person that asks it? That's what I was looking for in the new bylaw. So, you know, on the onset of, council gets this, recommends it, it's getting recommended from the Finance Committee, but, you know, when we sat down, why are we doing what we're doing? You know, is there a guideline that we should be following? Like, I just don't know where the numbers come from. You know, we had 500,000, we didn't spend it all. You know, that's great on us that we're holding some back, but, you know, I know if it's for a profit, you know, we don't like to put taxpayers' money out into that. So there's a lot of things here, there's only eight or 10, and I'm just wondering how we got to those numbers, if someone could answer it, thank you.
Counselor McAllaire.
Yeah, Counselor Durand, yeah, as, you know, as you know, you do sit on Finance Committee with me. You know, it is a good, you know, it's a fair comment, but I guess the only thing, one of the things, I guess, that jumps out at me in the case of Confederation Center, just to be clear, there were some big asks in our total requests, new requests this year. The Confederation Center, just so folks know, they asked for, you know, they were looking for, I believe it was $5 million over five years. And, you know, we certainly don't, you know, we certainly couldn't entertain anything like that, so this, and then, you know, there was the Charlottetown Library, which, you know, is a beautiful piece of infrastructure. These are, you know, these are big asks, so, but as for the eligibility criteria, Counselor Durand, if in our grants bylaw, page 510 in our, you know, in our information, eligibility criteria, it kind of speaks to that a bit, and I think that's kind of where the example come in for the Confederation Center, when we look at, you know, when we look at the economic impact that that institution has, you know, in the city, it, we just felt that it was worthy. I mean, the Confederation Library was something that we, you know, we've funded over the past couple of years to the 201.3 million, so, but I don't think we can ignore these kind of big requests, but we have to be balanced, and I think that's all we've tried to do here. I know it is a recommendation of 200, that's to be debated and yet approved here, you know, at the council level, so, and that's, I guess that's why it's here. It's here as a recommendation, and let's get at it, you know, if it's 200 or 100 or not at all, you know, these are up for debate. This is just what we had to come up with from the Finance Committee, you know, we had to come with something, and we just feel this was a measured approach. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Matar.
Thank you, your worship. Chair McAllaire, just to play on Counselor Durand's comments, I think we had an ask of about 1.8 million in this year, and indicating that we're looking to possibly grant about 300,000. So what is the other 200,000 earmarked for? Is that for potentially just throughout the fiscal period? And then, second of all, you know, if I look at some of the ones here, just not singling any certain one out, but just benevolent Irish society looking for $5,000, and we say no to that as a recommendation, and then seeing $200,000 still kind of on the table, you know, how do we do that? And I guess explain where the other 200,000 is, and is it earmarked for something or planned to throughout the rest of the year for grants? That can in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Matar, for your question. And basically, you're right on, like, you know, on the balance, it's basically there for, you know, future requests or an allocation of some, if there's something here, you mentioned the bed in the Irish Society, so there is, you know, there's room to move, certainly with that $200,000 difference, be it with something that you feel strong about that has an "O" in front of it. So it, that's the answer, Counselor Matar.
Counselor Matar, you want to follow up? Go ahead.
Thank you, just to follow up to that. I guess it seems a little bit, you know, the process would be first come, first served, like, if we're kind of putting it out through the year, we had a large ask right up front, so we're trying to allocate some of those. So I, you know, I think maybe looking at the grants bylaw to determine some criteria as to, you know, maybe there's a timeline of when to put that in so that everybody gets an equal share of, or at least consideration of the allocated money that is there. So if I, you know, if I come in September, October, there's only $5,000 left in the grants budget, but maybe that didn't come to light in my organization until that time. So, you know, again, it's, you know, it appears that this came to council, most of these came to us, through, you know, unsolicited proposals here, and we're trying to go through there, but earmark a couple extra 100,000 in the event that others come forward throughout the year. So maybe just something to consider on adding an additional timeline in that allows, like, these grant programs start at this time, they end at this time, and there's the money done for the year type of thing, as opposed to leaving it open. Thank you.
Counselor McAllaire.
Thank you.
Counselor Durand.
Thank you. Like I said before, the criteria, I know we put a set date on it, it has to be in by a certain time in November, I think, to be considered for this operating budget. So, but like I say, we give 2,500, let's just take the first one, we give 2,500 to the Vessel Arts Studio, but we give 4,840 to the Guild, and then we give 50,000 to Blooming House. Where's the criteria that we can say, okay, you're coming in here, you're a small group, you're looking for under 10,000, you'll be considered here. If you're 10 to 100 here, if you're over, then this is a certain criteria. This is what I'm looking at for numbers of why, instead of just sitting here saying, okay, you know, you came to the Finance Committee, you know, you did your homework, we're going to give you a big amount. It just seems to me that, you know, we discussed this at the committee level, and there was no clear cut, this is what you're asked, this is what you get because the grants bylaw states that. So that's all I'm looking for, if you can try to answer that. And I mean, we pushed this ahead, you know, these were staff recommendations, we tweaked it a little bit, but it was my understanding that council would have a voice here tonight to see, okay, yes, we're going to cut that down from 200 to 50, or bump it up to 250, you know, that's why I voted to move it ahead for council discussion.
Okay, Counselor McAllaire.
Sorry, I was just going to add, like, maybe it's like the RFP process, there could be some scoring evaluation criteria that's added to that that allows it to come out as a qualitative, you know, type of measure of, this is what you're asking for, you meet these certain criteria, you get a score, and that score equates to a certain amount of money, possibly.
Yeah. And Counselor Matar, as you know, the presentations were made to council, and all those presentations are part of our package. They came in here, presented what they wanted, gave justification for why they were looking for the amount of money. And I know that the Confed Center, I just sent it to you, Counselor Durand, what the contribution, the financial contribution is to the city of Charlottetown from the Confed Center? And it's about, they have 403 employees, it's $17 million in labor cost, their contribution to the GDP is about 28, 27 million, and federal provincial tax revenue is 6.5. So their presentation did say five, we didn't go with the five, and if you look at the Charlottetown Library Learning Center, council remembers that we gave them 1.3 million dollars over three years, so we made a contribution to the Charlottetown Library Learning Center, and I think that we just saw that this time was not where we were going. Counselor Twill? Hold on, just one second.
Counselor McAllaire, when we're giving out monies to these respective organizations, they still have to provide financial statements, audited statements, give us a breakdown of where the money's being spent, how it's being spent, and when we're doing this, for example, I see, you know, one of the organizations here, we get $50,000. Is that just for this year, for Blooming House, or is that for, you know, every year? But in terms of audited statements, financial statements, is that all being forwarded to the city finance department to ensure all of that information is forthcoming?
Counselor McAllaire, it's, when someone has the floor, no, no, you're up now, but we just can't have two or three people, when someone has the floor, that person's standing, that allows him or her to speak. Counselor McAllaire.
Thank you, Counselor Twill, for that. There are some due diligence financials that I believe are required, but I will see that that exact information gets to you, just on what is involved there and due diligence in terms of follow up. And I'm sorry, your first question, comment was? Oh, right, yeah, thank you. No, I got it, got it.
A one-shot deal, or?
Yeah, yeah, and thanks for that, it was kind of understood, and I think we agreed at the committee level that all these requests were kind of considered, because I asked that question myself at the, you know, the committee level, is Blooming House, in this case, you asked for 75, we allocated 50, or that's what we're recommending to council here, not to be understood that that's going to be, you know, a mail-in check for 50,000 every year, just this is a one-off, kind of, this year, we'll look at it again, and I think that's kind of understood across the board.
Counselor McCabe? Just, can you let Counselor McCabe go, and then you can get up?
Thank you. And I sit on finance as well, and I'm glad that it's here for this kind of further discussion, we did want that. Because again, you know, when we're looking at numbers, I have to tend to agree with Counselor Durand and Matar, is can we justify, like, why 4,840? The ask's 25,000, the recommendation comes from staff for 4,840, but based on what? I still think that there's a little bit of work to tidy up, and whether it goes back to what you said, and there's a scoring criteria of some sort, or we have a $10,000 and under grant, or something where it's just a little clearer when we ask, for sure, because to me, I have no idea where 4,840 came from, or if the ask is 8,000, why are we offering 2,500, based on what? It's still not clear to me on the criteria that's there.
Counselor McAllaire.
Yeah, Counselor McCabe, thank you for that and your comment. Just to be clear, and I do agree, the Guild, the 4,840 is an odd number, I think the same myself, I guess, but just to be clear on that, and again, I think, be in your packages on the information, the Guild do get an operating, continuing operating grant, I believe it's 25,000 or 50? And so what we agreed to here was just to give them a COLA amount on that operating grant, and that was kind of, if you remember at Finance, we had...
Canadian price index, CPI.
That kind of was, so we just applied whatever that was to the 50, and it came out to 4,840, you know, probably should have rounded it off to 5,000 or 4,800, perhaps.
And that was brought up at the meeting, right? That was discussed at the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor McCabe.
Yeah, it was discussed, and I forgot that. But again, that would be really good information and clear if it was presented. There's a lot that was discussed at the meeting, there was a lot of money discussed, so I still think that, that's great if you're on the Finance Committee, you have that opportunity to have those discussions, but I think it's really important that anybody should be able to pick up a document and see what we base our criteria.
Counselor Bernard.
I just want to say, your worship, in the past, and I think in this particular round, excuse me, when we were doing the budget, this section was left out, which we normally have the discussions within council, and I think they wanted to change the grants policy to update it, which they've done. This particular time, I think Finance Committee went over it, they got the recommendation from staff. Normally, we would have that conversation, a rationale for each one, I think this year was just a one-off because it was taken to Finance to change the grants policy. So what I see, I can see there's a lot of questions, but I mean, I'm okay with it, but I mean, if you want to defer it and have council discuss it, that can happen too.
Well, if we defer it, we're leaving some of these agencies that are waiting to hear from us, and we did defer it to review and update the grants policy and the grants bylaw, so let's hear what else. Counselor, deputy, do you want to go there?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just still not clear on why we're leaving 200,000 on the table for future applicants when everyone was given that timeline to apply, so we're leaving others to not get anything because maybe others will apply later? No? So why is there two, like, if we allocated 500,000, we're only recommending 308?
That was the decision of the committee, that we set aside 500 because it was originally 1.8 million, and the 500 is not being allocated because the committee through staff recommendations, correct, Sue, decided to go with what's in front of you. So if you want to add more later on, you can, but it's just, that's why we thought 500 would be a plot that we could leave with. Yeah. Again, we're not shutting the door, I just think we have to make contributions to our community, other levels of government do it, so it's part of the funding campaign. Counselor Twill, you?
No, just want to call the question.
Oh, you want to call the question, okay. So can we read the resolution first? Oh, does he? Do you want to speak on the resolution?
No, no.
Okay.
Just want to comment on, you know, on the big numbers, I think I said it, but again, like, say, the Confeder, the Confeder Center, you know, we did come to the door, or come to the table for them, we, 1.3 million, so I'm not sure I said that, if I did, I'm repeating myself. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. CAO Eleanor Mohammed, can you read the resolution, please? S'il vous plaît.
This is the first resolution of the Finance Audit, Tendering and Administration Committee, moved by Counselor John McAllaire, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown repeal the existing grants policy, P-FIN-6, and replace it with the draft amended grants policy, P-FIN-9, as per the attached documents effective May 8, 2023.
Questions called, all in favor of the repealing of the former grants policy? Please raise your hand. Okay, Counselor McAllaire, yea or nay? Okay. Nine zero.
Finance Audit, Tendering and Administration Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor John McAllaire, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown provides grants to external agencies as outlined in the attached report to Finance Number Two-2023 for the fiscal period of 2023-2024.
Okay, Counselor Bernard.
I'm just wondering, your worship, if we can make a friendly amendment, I'm just looking at Tremploy, and they asked for $50,000. And that was over like five years, I just wonder if you can just make that one, since there's 200,000 left, why doesn't just make that 50,000?
Look, is there general consensus?
I'll put motion for it.
Friendly amendment? Well, because they were going on the recommendation from Tremploy.
They asked for 10,000, they asked for 50,000 for five years. But I mean, if I think for something like that, for what Tremploy is trying to do, and the money's there, I would rule a friendly amendment that they get 50,000 now.
So there's a friendly amendment on the floor. I need a, there's a mover, I need a second. Counselor McKinnon, seconding the friendly amendment. Okay? Can you, so the friendly amendment is to, Tremploy goes from 10 to 50 to pay it off in the one year. Question on the friendly amendment, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Counsel Bernard, Counselor McAllaire, Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Matar, Counselor McKinnon, Counselor McCabe, all those against. Counselor Durand, you're for it? Okay, so Counselor Durand, against, so it's eight, one for the friendly amendment, so that goes up to 50. So instead of 306, it's now 346.
Thank you.
346, 840. Counselor Twill, you want to speak to the resolution? The, the main resolution? Go right ahead, buzz in there. Go ahead.
Counselor McLeir, maybe you can help me with this. All these funding requests, we make sure that we're not funding private business, correct?
Correct.
Counselor Twill.
Okay. Counselor Duran.
Thank you. And, and you know, I understand about Tremploy and the friendly amendment, but what I've been asking for is the criteria. That's, you know, so I'm the bad guy that, that doesn't want to do that. So why don't we go bump it up to Blooming House to 75? See, but there's no criteria here. We're just picking and choosing.
No, but Counselor Duran, the 50 is over five years. Counselor Bernard said, instead of going the 50 over five, just go with the one year. With, with Blooming House, that's a one-year ask. So if they come next year, they may ask for more, they might not ask for anything. So that's.
But see, but to see, we're not, this was the whole idea of delaying it to get the policy procedure in place.
Right.
The nice people come into Tremploy and it was approved by council 10 to nothing. Give them what they want. Like, why are we, we putting that on our, on our budget for this year? And, and that's why I'm saying the policy and procedures grant. If they ask for it, then they should get what they ask for. I just don't understand it, but.
No, but, but I agree. I agree. Like, it's, it's a one payment instead of five payments. Counsel Bernard.
I think, you know, at some point, that's what council's here for, is to make decisions. And I think these are, these are asks, and so council has to discuss. This year around, Finance discussed them. This was the recommendations that were made, so that's where we're going there. You can have criteria, and I think that, that the staff did the best they could with the criteria, and I think it's great to be able to have it relating to the strategic plan. So, but I think at some point, council needs to make a decision on how much money we're going to give to the people that are asking. And so these, these are recommendations that were made to council. But there's, I, I don't think you're going to find anything that's going to be crystal clear, just because someone asked for a certain amount, that you have to give them that amount. It's based on, it's based, there's a criteria there now, and council at the end of the day has to make a decision. And that's what we're doing here tonight.
Okay, Counsel Matard.
Yeah, thank you. I think, you know, as we're, we're sitting here and going through this, and we just, Chair, we just, you know, just made a decision to increase some funding. We still have a couple here that are, that were deemed no financial support this year. I, I think that we need to, you know, look back at the why of that. I mean, I think we have, I think what Counselor McCabe mentioned earlier, we have a number of, now we're down to, I think, 150,000 left. You know, these other ones were asking for smaller amounts, we could probably give them some financial support as well. I mean, we just made a really quick decision to increase Tremploy, which is great. I think others would benefit that, from that as well. I'm not sure of the rationale. Like I say, we don't have the rationale why the others were, were no recommendation. So we don't, yeah.
Report?
That's what.
It's, Counsel.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
And, and if, and if you look at, Counsel Matard, if you look at the benevolent BIS 200-year anniversary, that's 2025. And they're just trying to put some stakes in the ground in preparation, so I think it was, we'll leave it till next year. And we've been very good with our partner out there on North Road, the BIS. I think it's a great organization. Counsel McLeir.
Just, I think you just said it there, Your Worship. The, yeah, there's good rationale in, in the reports for Island Theater, Michael Penner Gas Kelly in the Park. I think it speaks to it very well there. Thank you.
Questions called. All those in favor, please put up your hand. Okay? All those against? Okay, eight to one.
Eleanor, I think Eleanor should read it again.
Sure. You want to read it again with the amendment?
It's after Tremploy, it says. Give me that word.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Sorry, but that's CEO Eleanor Mohammed.
Moved by Counselor John McLeir, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown provides grants to the external agencies as outlined in the attached report to Finance Two-2023 for the fiscal period of 2023-2024, and that the attached report be amended to change the Tremploy contribution to $50,000 to be paid out in the first year.
Okay. Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those contrary? Eight to one. Counsel Duran. And Counselor Beck is absent. Do you have one to read there? Okay.
Okay. City of, City of Charlottetown Grants Bylaw 2023-GB-1. To repeal the City of Charlottetown Grants Bylaw 2018-17, initially approved and adopted December 4, 2018, and replaced with the attached Grants Bylaw 2023-GB-1, which applies to council. City of Charlottetown staff and any person, group, or body for which municipal grants may be established, application may be made, reviewed, and awarded. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown Grants Bylaw 2023-GB-1 be read for a first time. Moved by Counselor John McLeir, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it pass? Contrary? Eight, one. That's for the grant policy. Grants policy, correct? Oh, the bylaw. Thank you. Thank you. Because policy, we don't need a bylaw to change anything. Thank you. CEO Eleanor.
Thank you, Your Worship. Be it resolved that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw and that it be entitled to the City of Charlottetown.
This is still the first one?
That it be entitled, the City of Charlottetown Grants Bylaw Number 2023-GB-1, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Counselor John McLeir, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it carry? Eight, one. Okay. That's it. Okay.
That's all good.
Counselor Beck. Absent. Thank you kindly, Counselor McLeir. Okay, and our next report is Counsel Ramsey.
No. Chair, sir.
HR, that is, sorry, Counsel Matard.
I think I'm ready for you. Thank you, Your Worship. The Human Resource Committee did not meet since our last monthly regular council meeting. Therefore, there are no resolutions for this evening. If there's any questions relating to the Human Resource Committee, I will do my best to address those as our manager, Emily, is not with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Matard. Oh, Counsel Twill. Go ahead, sir.
Counselor Matard, could you, for your next committee meeting, put on your agenda the reintroduction of the Community Engagement Officer? We had one here. It worked out well. The position worked out well, helped assist counselors with things that we need to get done with respect to our constituency. It's been a huge void since the position hasn't been filled. Not sure why it hasn't been filled, but nonetheless, we need someone there that's going to help assist counselors and things that we need to do, and information and research, and could be community meetings, or whatever the case may be. I don't know why the position hasn't been filled, but please do what you can to expedite this. Thank you.
Counsel Matard.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. I'll most certainly do that. I've noted that and I'll address that with management tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Bernard.
Just out of curiosity, is that part of the governance review? Do we know? That position?
Counsel Matard.
I know.
I don't, I don't recall, but I can defer possibly to CEO Eleanor. I know you weren't here probably at that time, but not to put you in his body.
No, you're just asking, right? No one is asked.
I can follow up then, if you'd like as well. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, the governance report is for all of us. Yeah. Yeah, it did, I thought it was sent out. Counsel Matard? The governance report from KPMG, was that out?
Yes, I believe every counselor was provided with the governance report electronically through, to us. It was prior to one of the meetings that we had here.
Could we get it resent?
Sure can.
Okay, Counsel Twill, second question.
Lots of task items tonight. Thank you.
You know, there's reference made here to the governance review. It's irrelevant, really. I mean, we had that position that was here at City Hall. It was introduced in the last term. And like I said, it worked out well. And I think we need someone there that can work with elected officials and help us in some of the, some of the requests that we need. Because sometimes when you do make the requests, you know, the corporation is busy doing things for the corporation. We need someone there that can help us as elected officials, help us, whether it's research, doing write-ups, or whatever the case may be, community meetings. I think it's a valuable tool. I certainly miss it, and I'd like to see it back, back in the docket and have that position fulfilled.
Okay. Okay, for a committee with no report, it's got a lot of questions. Counsel, Counsel Bernard.
This'll be, this'll be it. No, no, not saying I'm against the position that Counsel Twill has brought up. I'm just saying it was a governance review done, and I forget, 35,000 or whatever we paid for it. I'm just wondering if that was a position that they looked at. They looked at a number of positions, number of recommendations made. I'm just curious if that was one of them. Let's hope.
Counsel Matard.
I, if that would, if that position falls within the Human Resource Committee, I don't recall that as being a recommendation under that committee. Doesn't mean it's not in another committee. Historically, I'm not sure where that would have, would have been placed before, but I'll certainly follow up with management. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Matard. Okay. I'm getting the nod from Counsel McCabe to move on. Protective and Emergency Services Committee. Anything else, Counsel McCabe? Got the chief and the deputy chief. Okay. Go ahead there, old buddy.
There we go. Thank you, Your Worship. We did not meet because there's a little glitch in the schedule last month, but we worked around that anyway. We have no resolutions, but I got a few highlights. As Chair, I'd like to congratulate Kent Mitchell for being a successful candidate for the Deputy Fire Chief position. What country brings an awful lot of experience with knowledge and with the man's general role with the city? And I would like, oh, sorry. And I always like to recognize, it was International Firefighters Day on May 4, and that went over well. This year, the MD boot drive was April 8, and we gathered $9,288. I mean, for MS. And along with, on April 15, along with Your Worship and a few other counselors that were there, the Charlotte Fire Department had their service recognition night. And it went over very well and was very well attended. And the highlight was a 50-year fireman's pin to Frank Robinson, which is fantastic when you look at it. I mean, Frank only looks at with 30 or 80, but now, but he was there for 50 years. And I'd like to have a colleague, who, Police Chief Brad McConnell, because Brad met with the Downtown Inc. last week, I believe it was, or this past Tuesday, Brad, I believe it was. And there was about 59 people of the business there, and he had, the chief had some of his members there to explain about safety and how we're going to be doing a lot of issues and all that within the city. They're very responsive to it. Don Allen was very thankful for it. So Brad, I'd like to thank you for doing that. And we're looking forward to have the Deputy Chief Kent around for a while. So if you have any questions, I will be willing to answer. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your report, Counsel Ramsey. Just wondered if you could bring back to your committee, you're getting some information. We've been having ongoing issues of vandalism, again, being reported around Barber Circle, Oak Drive. Really disruptive residents are really feeling violated in their own homes and their own communities. So there's been prejudicial signage on our community signs. There's been property damage with trampolines being damaged, houses being spray painted. We've already had a community meeting with police, and His Worship and Deputy Mayor were in attendance with the community residents around what they could be doing, you know, reporting the issues, staying kind of the course, not getting involved. But it's, it's amping up again, and it's quite disruptive, and residents are wanting something done. You know, we've increased police presence. We have a wonderful community police officer in the area. I don't know if we can be putting some e-watch cameras or some collaboration with the school on some education stuff happening with parents and students. Because I think probably they assume it's youth that are out doing some, having some fun, maybe a little bored, but I think that they really need some education around what this is doing to the residents in that area. And if we could kind of brainstorm something at committee level, or provide me with something more that I could at least provide the residents with, I'd appreciate that.
Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, Counsel McCabe, for that. And we'll certainly put it on our, on our agenda for this week, for this month, which will be in two weeks' time. And we'll, and I think the chief took some notes of that, too, and it will be brought up. Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Counsel Ramsey, for your report. I got a couple of questions. First one, I was contacted by a resident back in April. She was very happy with the parking ticket relief program that had worked out for her favor. Just wondering if there's any stats been released to how many people used that program in April.
Well, thank you for that. We probably would have had that report, and I, as I said, like, our meeting this month was postponed, so we will have that for you the next time, if that's okay with you. Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, sir.
It was, it was brought up today at the DCI meeting. Maybe the chief can correct, but I think he, she said it was only for the one month, 27 tickets?
I couldn't remember the number.
Okay, but I, I think it was. Anyways, we'll verify it.
Yeah, we will verify that.
But there were some tickets.
Yes, because we had a luncheon with the DCIs afternoon.
Go ahead, Counsel McKinnon, start with that.
Great, thank you. Chair, I've had, it would in, with Hidden Valley Subdivision, we're getting many complaints, or I am getting many complaints, over nuisance bylaw that we have for noise. It started last summer, it's gone back into this summer, where they're starting up the heavy equipment at 5:30 in the morning, disrupting the neighbors. Bylaw and police have been called, and they keep being told, the resident says, next time they're going to get a ticket. It's been three calls now that the resident has called and said, next time they're going to get a ticket. So what can be done with this?
Like, it's funny you brought, like, you brought that up because I had a discussion today with the bylaw officer where we got that on our agenda. He phoned me this afternoon, in fact, phoned me at 4 o'clock again, just to see. And I think he met with the chief and he met with CEO Eleanor a bit, and seeing if we can change the time a bit on that, but that's going to have to go through a change of the bylaw. But that will be brought up at our meeting in two weeks' time. And I'll certainly get back to you tonight.
Counsel McKinnon, more?
And thank you, Ms. Chair. One more question in, when you brought up bylaws, I understand that the bylaws are now down at Cox and Palmer to be reviewed. Is there a timeline to, to get our bylaws in sync under the Summary Proceedings Act?
CEO, or Brad, would you, one of you people like to answer that? It's a little, that's above my pay, my pay scale.
CEO Eleanor?
CAO, I should say, sorry.
Thank you, your worship. I don't think we have a timeline from them yet. We'll have to ask them and find them, find out and answer to that.
We'll certainly get back to you. Councillor McKinnon.
Councillor Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Ramsay, I know you were at the DC meetings afternoon, but through you, I'd like to hear what the chief has to say. On the policing issue and expanding the police force, and it's a good question, the city's been growing leaps and bounds. I'm just wondering, is there a number in mind? I know, last I heard, I think we had 58 police officers. I'm just wondering, has it been looked at recently for the population growth? Where should we be with police officers? How short are we, if we are short at all?
Thank you for that, councillor Bernard. Chief and I discussed that through the years when I was on it before and all that. He would probably have a better idea of what we're comfortable with, I guess, chief, of the number of officers that we should have.
Your worship, Chair, that is a difficult question to answer with a straight number. You know, certainly, we are lower than the Atlantic average, based on our base population. But one of the unique challenges here in Charlottetown is our huge population influx in the summertime, and that has been a real challenge to meet. And so although I can tell you with a great deal of certainty that we need more officers, I think it would take a little more evaluation and a little more stakeholder engagement to really put a responsible number before council. But I can tell you, right now, we'll be really challenged to meet, you know, what is set out to be a very bumper year tourism. And so, you know, certainly, I could bring some recommendations back to committee for consideration, and I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, councillor Bernard.
Curious, just follow up, I'm just curious, like a lot of other industries, is it difficult to get staff, hire new police officers?
Your worship, Chair, councillor Bernard, you know, actually, we're very fortunate in Charlottetown. Our quality of life in our city, you know, is very attractive to people coming from other jurisdictions. So when we put, you know, expressions of interest for hiring for new constables out there, we do get a good response. So it's not a matter of the challenge that other agencies have where they do, cannot attract people to their jurisdiction. We just need more positions to attract people to.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Bernard.
I just didn't quite get that. You don't have enough positions to attract people to? You mean open positions that you have salary dollars for? Is that what you mean?
Yes, and maybe I didn't phrase that correctly. We need more positions. If we had more positions, I'm very confident we could attract people to them.
Okay, so it's a dollar, a dollar issue?
Yeah, that's correct.
And the reason I bring it up, I'm just wondering, because I know either last year's budget or the year before that, we used to always put money in for our summer cadets. And it was getting very hard to get summer cadets, if we can get any at all. So I thought at that time there was a decision made to use that money that was budgeted every year, slide that over into hiring full-time. Is that still working, or is that not happening in this budget?
No, that is correct, and we did do that. But we need to, we no longer can attract part-time officers to our jurisdiction. There's too many full-time jobs out in the field right now. And, you know, historically, we always relied on last year's graduates of the police academy to come to Charlottetown to assist and get some experience before they found full-time employment. That is no longer the case. And so we do not have that benefit that we used to have. So now we're in a situation where we need to attract full-time people, and we need full-time positions. We did utilize and reallocate funds for summer hirings to full-time positions, but that was a limited amount. And we need some money allocated in that line item also to pay the cadets that come for the summer. And that is different, because we do not count them as strength. It's more of a mentorship situation.
Okay. Good. You got another, go ahead.
No, just some of the concerns I heard this afternoon, and it had to do a lot with summer policing, I just wondered. But you could, you could take it back to the committee, I guess. It'd be nice to get that looked after, see what that number is, and see if there's a dollar amount that we need for improve the summer policing. Thank you.
Okay, I better get back to my two questions per person, because it's, I know we should try to wrap them into a big question or a couple of questions. Councillor MacLeire. Councillor Ramsay.
Yeah, yeah, councillor Bernard and I and councillor Twill and councillor Anka are there. You were today, your worship, we heard some great things from the city. And, but at the same time, we gotta, we want our city safe and clean and all that, and that's why officers want to come here, but we gotta get more officers. So we're going to be looking at that in the budget for the following year, that, you know, we need more officers. Thank you.
Councillor MacLeire.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Worship, I just wanted to ask the Chair, just on the letter or email that council was all copied on from Paul McNeil. Anyway, it, the April, April 28th letter that CAO Mohammed was copied on, all of council. And just talking about the Derelict property, 282, 284 University Avenue. Anyway, it's a very compelling letter. I'm not going to read it. Everybody's had a chance to read it, but it says, just in the preamble of the letter, it says, "Noted in the letter, properties in clear violation of the city Charlottetown's dangers, hazardous and unsightly premises, bylaw copy enclosed." And along, you know, and then, anyway, everybody's, I trust, you know, has read the letter. Just have to kind of ask the question, it certainly has history. There's, anyway, some pretty, some pretty strong issues and concerns raised in the letter. And I just wondered if anybody can kind of speak to it. That's, I feel that, you know, council, the city owes the resident some kind of, some kind of feedback on his concern, as is shared in the email that we've all received.
Councillor Ramsay.
Thank you for that, councillor MacLeire. And I, we are bringing that back, and I know I sound like a broken record here, but we are bringing it to our agenda. I phoned the police chief this morning over this issue, and I phoned the fire chief just to let him know that we are going to be putting it on the agenda for this month. And this problem's been going on for five years now, and we want to get some good answers. So this is why it's on the agenda. They both told me they're going to be researching it between now and the 22nd, I guess, of May, is our next meeting. And we'll have something for everybody by then, we hope. Thank you.
So just in the point of information, councillor Drong, before I go to you, is councillor Twill left the meeting because he's in conflict? That's why he left, so I just want to make that clear. Councillor Drong.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm just wondering, councillor MacLeire, I know you're just starting here. We get letters all the time from citizens. There's many derelict buildings around. You take the Irving Building down there, you take Pickers up by Superstore, you take a house across the street from, or apartment building from Papa Joe's. You know, this came to council once before or twice, and, you know, the family has been struggling with, you know, ownership or leadership to see which way they're going to go with this. They went and they checked with the police and the fire, and they're compliant and everything that they've asked for. So I don't know why, you know, just because we all got an email, you would bring it up. Are you working with the CAO? I think the CAO was looking into this before, you know, came to council. Like, I just don't understand why it's here in the public forum again, because we get an email.
Councillor MacLeire.
Oh, councillor Drong, and, you know, I guess you're right, you know, I knew, I don't know, I just, I just felt, you know, upon reading it and looking at, it is well put together with, there's certainly history there. If what's said in the letter and the communication is, you know, is correct and accurate, I think that, you know, there's, it needs another set of eyes or another look at it. Nothing to do, nothing to do with, you know, councillor Twill. I'm just looking at it, it could be anybody. Just it seems, you know, upon reading it, my impression, it's out there now, I can't take it back. But, you know, is, you know, do we have a policy? And is it, if we do, is it applied across the board? So it, you know, and, you know, in reading that, anyway, I've just, I'd like to know what the outcome of it can be. Is it, was it put to bed? Was it dealt with? I don't know, not by reading, not by reading that letter. It doesn't sound like, you know, it has been. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Councillor Drong.
Thank you for your explanation there, councillor MacLeire. But like I said, we have a dozen or more properties around. I don't know why, you know, somebody like yourself would bring this to the council floor. Once again, we all got the emails. You know, appropriate way would be to discuss with maybe the CAO or discuss, you know, with the head of police. You know, to bring it here and try to embarrass a fellow councillor, I just, I don't see that that's appropriate. Thank you.
Well, councillor Drong, sorry, you feel that way, it wasn't nothing personal, just by way of background, I did share with, I did share with the Chair of Fire and Police that I was going to ask a question on it. And so, and I think he may have shared that. I'm not sure if he talked with anyone else beyond that. But anyway, so I, and I mentioned to councillor Twill shortly there that I hadn't going to have a question on it, so I don't walk it back. Thank you.
Councillor McCabe.
And, you know, I think we were questioned whether or not we were, was due process being followed in the whole thing. And I think, I'm not speaking for you, councillor MacLeire, but I'm sure you're wanting to make sure that the proper process was followed in this case. And sometimes when you are in the muddy waters, you want to make sure that everybody's treated equity and fairly. So, thanks.
Councillor MacLeire.
And councillor Drong, you know, and just on that, and I'm sure there are other examples. So, you know, it's not unlike, you know, the grant thing. Like, if we do have policies, why aren't, why aren't we, so if, there are other examples, and they're not being used, and as it relates to unsightly premises and, you know, and what have you. I think that that's something, you know, is it a resource thing? Are we picking and choosing which ones we act on? I'm just asking the questions. Thank you.
Councillor Drong.
I understand you're asking the questions, but maybe this is not the floor to ask them on. I mean, you know, we said before that, you know, that this family has done everything that fire has asked of them and the police, and they're in the process of seeing what's the best use for this building. You can drive around the city here and see dozens. I just don't know why we keep coming back to the floor with this. You know, it's hurtful for the family, you know, it's embarrassing for councillor Twill. You could have came to him or the CAO or to Kevin on the side. I just don't see the understanding of coming here. And you'll learn down the road, you get lots of emails from people, but I don't think every email deserves to come to the floor, you know, for publicity. So, thank you.
Okay, but it is going back to councillor Ramsay.
Yes, it is, your worship. As I stated earlier, I did make a phone call. I got a call from one of the councillors, seeing if it's going to be on the agenda, which we're supposed to do, if we're going to ask a question. Like, sort of give the Chair a heads up. And I said yes, and I talked to the police chief and the fire chief both this morning. And I said, what I'm going to say in public is that we're putting it on the agenda for this month and see where we are with this.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And take a look at those other structures in the city, that, do we have a policy? Do we have a policy procedures? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, chief, and thank you to the new deputy chief, new deputy chief Kent Mitchell. Welcome aboard. Okay, can we get councillor Twill back in? It's his report, his next report. Parks, Recreation, Leisure Activities Committee report to council. No resolutions. Frank's here, Mr. Quinn's here. I see Mr. McEwen is waiting patiently in the back there. Good to see you, Mr. McEwen. Councillor Twill, just next time, when you do leave, just see.
Come up, then it's loose, I couldn't, couldn't see.
Okay. Councillor Twill, it's Parks, Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee report to council, May 8th.
Thank you. The report is in your package. The committee did not meet this month. The manager felt that we better waiting to have more items on the agenda for our next meeting. I'll do my best to answer any questions, any technical questions or anything that needs to be addressed immediately, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Drong.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, councillor Twill. I know I had a discussion, I gave an email to our manager and yourself over Centennial Park. And Centennial Park is like the crown jewel of Sherwood, has older tracks to walk on. I know seniors, you know, we upgraded the trails, you know, Roger Burt had an insight on it, we upgraded the trails for it. And I, you know, I was pretty dismayed this weekend. You know, there's now 50 stakes in the Centennial Park. Now, these are four stakes from where we were going to put the outdoor rink, they're still there. Then there's a number of stakes that are still standing from where there were plow in the walkways. But there's 30 stakes sitting, sitting around the middle of the park. And over the weekend, there was a couple of people that drove their cars to Centennial Park, and they get out with knapsacks and they continue to throw frisbees at these stakes. You know, and normally, I'd be saying, sure, anything outside and keep young adults or whatever in a park throwing frisbees would be great. But, you know, there was kids in the playground, and they had a stake right by the playground where they were throwing the frisbees. And these aren't just the big plastic frisbees, they're little frisbees. And they were throwing them at the stakes, and then there was people walking, you know, older people that, you know, that's their only exercise, because we don't have many sidewalks, that they, they come down and walk around Centennial Park, and people with the dogs. Now, me looking at this, and there's stakes all over the paths of the park where older people come, and then they see this, and then they're, you know, they're very cautious, they don't know what's going on, and they leave the park. So I'm asking, you know, we were fortunate in Ward 6 to have three parks, there's one up in Mulberry and one in Rosedale, that they don't have walking tracks. And I know in Mulberry, there's part of a frisbee golf in the woods there. They've, someone nailed orange baskets to the trees or something. And, you know, that would be behind a house and still owned by the park. But, you know, in Centennial Park, where there's older people walking, there's people walking, there are dogs, there's daycares go there every day. And to have these frisbees around scaring people, and I'm not saying they're scaring, I'm just, you know, people get nervous, right? Frisbees going, is there any way we can move this to one of the other parks, you know, so we can get it out of a walking park like this? Thank you.
Councillor Twill.
Thank you, councillor Drong, for your question. Yes, I did read your email. I was hoping staff would have responded. I can tell you, sir, staff will respond tomorrow and contact the, this particular user group to encourage them to move to another park in the community, to alleviate the concerns and make it safer for the seniors that like to, like to use that as their, you know, their recreational space and time. I hope that answered your question.
No, that's a perfect explanation. Thank you, and I appreciate you, Frank, looking into it. You know, it's just something that, when older people get nervous and they leave, and I'm thinking, well, why isn't she walking down the path? It's because of this, right? So that's just something that maybe we can tweak, it'd be great. Thank you.
Councillor Ramsay.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, councillor Twill, for your report. And I should know the answer, but sometimes, like, one department helps soak the other overlaps. The parks with the fallen trees and, like, I'm going to use Skyview Park for an example. There's a lot of brush in there and everything, and a lot of the neighbors, I've been getting phone calls about it, and the fire department getting phone calls, they're worried that something's going to happen in there with fires. Is that the Parks and Recations Authority that cleaned Skyview Park, or is it Public Works, or do these work together?
That's a really good question, councillor Ramsay. That's a really good question, Counselor Ramsey. I can tell you that, again, we'll have a response for you tomorrow. Staff, you know, we, there's a lot of damage done, there's no doubt about it, from Fiona. I mean, wherever you go in the city of Charlestown, even the experimental farm property, Victoria Park, it's just, it's unbelievable. It's going to take time. I know our residents are patient. Some of them are very concerned about, you know, potential fire hazards, and rightly so. So, we'll take that under advisement, and our manager will send out a response to everyone here hopefully in the next 24 hours.
You want your manager to give a response now or do you want to leave it? Do you want?
Well, I mean.
If he's ready?
Yeah, he, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
You're ready there? Take it away, Frank.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, so it depends on where the trees have fallen. So, with regards to Skyview Park, our staff are assessing that right now. If we need additional assistance, we will hire a contractor to go in and clean it up. Public Works will usually come in if we have the trees set in a certain area and they can pick them up. But ultimately, it's our responsibility, and like you said, there is downed trees and you're not, we're not going to have everything cleaned completely like this. There is trees that are left in woods naturally, and that's environmentalism and whatnot for wildlife and that kind of thing. So, we're looking at when there's hazardous trees, like brush, spruce trees, pine trees that the branches might need to be removed or trees that are over dry. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Counselor Twill. If I may ask Frank?
[inaudible]
Yeah, and that's what they're, they're worried about was the brush and everything with that. And, and I think I forwarded the email to you and whoever else it was, anyway. But that's all they're worried about. But this was two weeks ago, and then, and then we had a whole week of rain, which sort of helped a lot because, like, there's kids going there from school, after school and all that, high school with their backpacks, and they're sitting there and they're having a smoke or, you know, whatever they're doing. And, and that's all they got to do is just drop one match. There's a lot of homes around there, older people too. So, thank you very much for that.
Think, Counselor McKinnon, did you have yours on?
Yeah.
Can he go first, deputy, because he was there? Go ahead there, sir, just pop down there. Okay. Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. To the Chair of Parks and Rec, question, just for clarification, you had mentioned about Centennial Park. This is a multi-use park, is it not?
Counselor Twill.
It's a park that, yes, has a number of usages. Yep.
So, just for clarification, did I understand you that you're going to ask a user group not to use the park?
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to see if we can find them in another location, because as Counselor Drong pointed out, they're staking it off. And when they stake it off, the way they do it, they're carving it, you know, I'm just surmising they're carving it of their own territory. And by carving it of their own territory, it precludes or prohibits others from using the park. And, and that's not what it's about. I mean, it's all about inclusiveness and ensuring that all, all the residents and the counselor, who knows the park better than anyone else in this chamber, made it quite clear that seniors don't feel safe and they're also infringing upon the children that are, that are in that particular area. So, I just think it's a miscommunication, and miscommunications, I mean, can be corrected hopefully relatively soon. Our manager is, you know, has received the email, he's going to look at it. We're going to work with that particular user group to find them, some, find them a location, hopefully somewhere nearby where they won't be infringing on others that use the park.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yeah, no, thank you for that clarification. That was good. It just, your first statement was that tomorrow it will be addressed, so I, I just wanted clarification. Thank you for that.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Get a little tight down there, isn't it? Oh, mercy! These cords. Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to circle back to Counselor Ramsey, Counselor.
[laughing]
No, I know, Counselor Ramsey's comment about needing the clarification around who, who he would reach out to, whether it be Parks and Rec or, or whether it be Public Works. And it's just another example of, of the continuation of working in silos. And I, I would put forward that maybe we could ask administration to maybe create a policy or a streamline the communication so that when we have questions, it's not, oh, that's Public Works or that's us. We should know clearly who, who, what falls under. And if it falls under multiple departments, then we should know that too, and we really do need to get out of these silos. Thank you.
Counselor Matarret.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Maybe just to add to that a little bit, Deputy Mayor, I've heard here tonight, there are several questions that are being asked by the certain committees that likely pertain to all the wards. So, I'm hearing trees like, I think of Joe Gis Park, there's a number of trees.
Yeah.
Large trees that are down the fence, and great if there's a, a, a plan of action that is occurring and you're communicating that, the management is communicating that back to a particular counselor or counselors. I think we should collaborate and send that out to everybody, especially if that messaging can benefit, you know, us all having a consolidated message to our residents regarding things that impact us all. I mean, there's certainly things that are just individual to certain wards, so I think it just goes back to the silo thing. Let's just get that communication out, because I'd love to know what's going on with, we have parked three, four parks as well with trees down and, and things of that nature. So, if you're telling a story to somebody else, it'd be great if I heard the same story. So, we're all on the same page. Thank you.
And just by coincidence, Counselor Matarret, the, with the conversation that the C A O and I had this morning about better communications and breaking down the silos. Counselor Twill? Hold on, hold on, sir. Just one sec. You're live, Mike. Go ahead.
Point well taken, Counselor Matarret, and, you know, that's something that we'll be discussing as well at Parks and Recreation, you remember the committee, when the committee does meet. But I, I think in all fairness, folks, we're going to have to temper our expectations when it comes to clean up some of these parks. I mean, just, just go through Victoria Park. And that's going to take a long time. We have a lot of, lot of parks in our city, a lot of damage is done, and we're, we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be patient. We want to do it right. But I know our, our staff are doing everything they can, and that doesn't mean we can't be creative to look at waste expedite the process. So, you know, the manager pointed out that we do an assessment, we're working with Public, Public Works, and, you know, whatever, what other, whatever other way we can be innovative to achieve that end, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, we're going to be working towards that.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. Okay. Thank you, Frank. Report's done, sir. Okay. Let's go to water and wastewater. Counselor, no, you're the last there, Counselor McCabe. Don't worry. Past, last is, last is best. Well, it should be up and down by that time anyway, so don't worry about it.
Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Drong.
Thank you very much. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on April 13th. I don't have any resolutions for your consideration tonight. Our minutes are in the package. If anybody wants to question anything on the minutes or the department, just feel free. If I can't answer it, I'll certainly get our expert over there to fill it in. Thank you.
Counselor Twill.
Thank you, Counselor Drong, for your report. Recently, I read via the media regarding broken water lines and asbestos being found in some of these water lines. I received some calls from residents that are concerned about asbestos and, you know, does that impact and affect the water quality? You know, how is testing done? I tried to assure the resident that our staff do testing on a, I believe, on a daily basis, working in conjunction with the province. But again, from a technical perspective, I would like to, you know, ask you through, through yourself, to our manager, what is the plan of action to, to eliminate any, any concerns regarding asbestos? What plan do we have in place to eliminate asbestos in, in the city's water lines? And will it be a communication strategy outlined and sent out to the community to give them that assurance? Thank you, sir.
Do you have all those questions down there, Counselor?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Just let me answer them.
That's why I'm asking. Do you want them to repeat?
I was just going to get to them.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Twill. I, I was fortunate enough to read the paper the other day when this question came up, and our manager, Richard McEwen, gave a very detailed and informative explanation of where the asbestos lines are. He's very knowledgeable where they are, what we're going to do within the next year, five years, and 20-year plan. He, he's, he gave a great interview, because I myself didn't, I didn't realize we still had these things. And he quoted a national average of the numbers of asbestos in, in certain water lines, and ours are certainly below that. But I, I would like him to, to comment on it and, and answer your question if it needs any more in-depth question. But the article that you gave, Richard, very informative. I really appreciate that we have you in your position when, when things get asked like this. So, thank you. You're more than welcome to, to jump in if you want to give a, the same explanation or, or a better one and answer Counselor Twill's question there. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Mr. McEwen.
Your Worship, I appreciate the response provided by the Chair of the Water and Sewer Utility. As he noted, we did provide the information in the newspaper article, and with council's support for water and sewer infrastructure, we are planning on renewal of that infrastructure. We're currently completing the engineering design for the first part of that program to be initiated this year.
Okay. Counselor Twill.
Thank you, Manager Richard. So, so we're going to start, start the work this year. Can you give me the, the locations in terms of the geographics where that work will begin? And how does that coincide with the, with the lead that's in our, our system as well? Like, I know it's comprehensive, it's going to take a lot of infrastructure dollars, but I'm looking at timelines and timeframes as to what we can do to, to eliminate both lead and the city's water system as well as see asbestos. Thank you.
Richard, do you want to go?
Yes, Your Worship. So, through the budget that council has supported this year, and again, supporting the renewal of water and sewer infrastructure in our city, it's Grafton Street where the asbestos pipe will be addressed. So, you, we're working on the engineering design, it will go out to tender, and then it will come back to council to approve that work, and it's related to the eastern gateway infrastructure renewal. And following the water and sewer, there'll be a resolution from Public Works for Passmore Street, and that's the fir, it's one of the piece, or locations within the city where we have lead service. So, if council approves that resolution, then we'll go to the residents and advise them of the, those services that we would plan to renew this year.
Good, Counselor Twill. Okay. And Richard, is it about two kilometers that we have to cover? I think that's what I read.
That's the asbestos cement pipe, yes, just over two kilometers.
Yeah. Okay. Counselor Yankoff.
Thank you. Without getting into the details of various, of operations, I'm just curious, there's been some water damage to some businesses around Charlestown from, from a third-party contractor that's working within Water and Sewer, and they're not getting any, they're not getting any feedback about whether or not the Water and Sewer is going to recoup their damages. And I'm just wondering, you know, if there's any feedback on that, that you could share with council, just so that I could go back to my residents that are asking about their damages and how that process is going. Thank you.
Yes, when there is damage by a third-party contractor to private or a business, it is with that private contractor. I mean, the, the city is not going to cover those costs. We will push the contractor to make sure that they resolve any damage that they cause within the city.
Counselor Yankoff, you want to go here?
Just, just a follow-up. Even when the third-party contractor is hired by the city? Just to clarify.
Correct, yes. So, I mean, we're, we hold the contractor to account. We're not going to have a contractor damage something, and then the city taxpayers are going to pick up those expenses. Those expenses are to be covered by the contractor.
Okay, that's great. So, if I hear you correctly, then the department will ensure that that third-party contractor looks after that? Is that what you mean?
That's correct. I mean, it is the responsibility of the contractor to make anything right that they have wronged.
Counselor McElie.
So, just staying with that, Counselor Drong or whatever, through the, to, to the Chair, Richard, on that, I might understand that if so, the contractor, whatever, if there's a landscaping thing or whatever, a beautification thing, would it be the city, the city may end up doing it, but billing the contractor or having the contractor get their own people fix the problem? I'm just wondering how, how that would work, because I did have a, I did have a resident reach out to me, I think, on this kind of same issue with questioning how or what can be done, if anything. Thank you.
And so, again, we will hold the contractor to account. It's the contractor's responsibility. You're not going to have the taxpayers or the ratepayers of the utility cover a cost that's a responsibility of the contractor.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Counselor Drong. Thank you, Richard. Mr. McEwen. Okay. Last report. We've got about 20 minutes, so, and we have to call for extra time, so I don't know what you want to do there, Counselor McCabe.
For extra time, most times, Your Worship. So, if I need a few extra minutes, then we might have to do that.
We'll give it to you. No, we'll be willing to share everything with you. Thank you, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you. So, the Public Works Committee met on the 26th of April. You'll find the minutes in your package. We anticipate two resolutions to come forward this evening. A few highlights for council. Victoria Rose now closed a vehicular, vehicular, I can't say the word, it's tire, the vehicle traffic and open for pedestrians only. So, this is a sure sign summer's approaching. The bike path in Victoria Park is now open for active transportation. There's been five crews out working hard, cleaning up the plow damage as well as still working hard to clean up the damage from Fiona. And there's been an awful lot of positive comments about the work that these crews are doing. So, want to make sure you let them know that residents are very appreciative of the work that, that they're doing. Woodpile on Park Street is in the process of being cleaned up, Counselor Twill, so that's positive. The asphalt crews will be starting back in late May. Speed, they're in the process of reinstalling speed humps in the city. These speed humps are being placed where they have been placed in past. And for people requesting council's new speed humps on their street, everybody thinks the speed hump is the be all and end all to solve the traffic speeding in our city, there is a process to follow. You have to access an application that has to be filled out by residents, and I think they have to have 15 signatures of people around them. That application goes into Public Works, and Public Works and police will consult to determine whether or not that's an appropriate place. We do actually have a speed home policy now in place that was passed a couple of years ago. Capital project work is underway. The Beach Street, Park Street connection has started, and Earth Forum has started the first sidewalk project completing work that they had started last year but were unable to finish. At committee level, we had discussion on the skunk raccoon removal program. We had an awful lot of complaints this year with residents, I think, misunderstanding what the purpose of our program is, thinking that if they had a vermin or a mouse or raccoon or skunk issue, that the city was going to come in and fix the problem. That really isn't the intent of the program that we offer here through the city. Our program is bare-bone minimal. We pay $10,000 approximately for the year. Residents can call the Public Works Department and get on a list to have a trap set at their property, one trap, that they'll come and drop for one week. And if they catch a pest, then the resident can call, the pest will be picked up after a week. If no pest is caught, they'll come pick up the trap and they just go down the list. So, we either need to develop a policy at the Public Works level around what's going to be involved in this service, or we have to decide as a council that this service is kind of misleading and maybe not reoffer this service. We are the only municipality in the country to provide this service. Staff would recommend no, but our committee felt that it was a great service to provide. So, I think it is something that we as a council have to decide if we want to continue with as well. So, any feedback?[1767.86] So, any feedback? I don't think we're going to have time to discuss a whole lot, but maybe a little bit.
Oh, no, we do. It will.
Yeah, we have 15 minutes. But I, what?
Vote for extra time. Keep it going, keep it going.
His worship, isn't it? But I don't think, I think we just, it is worth, a worthy discussion, because, again, we either have to do a better job letting them know that the service is really just fair, or we have to decide, is it a worthy service? Any questions? I'll do my best to answer.
There's a whole list here. Counsel Drong.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel McKee, for your report, and thank you, Mayor Brown. I have four questions. What, how do you want me to, do the four of them, write them down? Because you only get, well, the skunk thing, I mean, skunk and raccoon, I had residents use both, and they did, you know, get rid of the vermin for them, so that was appreciated. I'd certainly vote for that. The second of all, second question is the active transportation pathways. This came through the budget, and it was going to Ward Six, and I was so excited, you know, we're finally getting something that would suit the community, people would be happy. But when I started telling people, I've been blasted more and more times about it. You know, I tried to talk to my neighbors, one neighbor walked away from me, how could you do this? Because we have no information. Like, what I'm asking for is drawings, and that we did receive a drawing or an overview, what is it, the overview GPS shot in our package there a couple of months ago. But when I tried to tell people how to access it, they don't know. When I asked our manager, what side of the streets is it going on? Because I could use 50% of the people for, you know, agreeing with me. But then, we can't, we can't determine what side of the street it's on, but he guaranteed me that would, it'd be on one side or the other. So, you know, I felt pretty good about that. I asked about public consultation, you know, why we can't go to the community center, I know it's small, but get the community there, get them to see what we have, and inform them about this. Instead, the community is very, very upset. You know, I get, you know, a few people say they'd like to drive the bike down a certain street, but I said, no, no, we actually changed it to your street, it's going to your front lawn. And then I get, are you crazy? You know, that's, that's what I'm getting. You know, the active transportation on the bypass, you know, it's beautiful, it goes down there, there's kids, you know, all the big ones down by the hospital, you know, they're all in big areas. And I find with this, it's coming in through city neighborhoods and through city streets, and it's taken a big part of, if we're looking at three meters, which is 10 feet, or nine feet, then it's got to come in a foot off the street, so it's 10 feet. So, people are getting worried that they're going to take a big chunk of their front yards out. You know, we don't have any drawings, there's no public consultation. You know, a lot of these people that I'm seeing, they're very stressed out about it and want me to do something. Now, I know, okay, give it to somebody else. Well, maybe it could go up Broccoli Point Road or a bigger street, what Mount Edward Road could be, you know, I'd be all for that, for safety, because my granddaughter, she does get out on it, you know, with her parents, and they love them. But I just don't think it, it should intertwine into neighborhood streets where we only have, like in Lyle Lock, it's 40 kilometers, they're nice, big, wide streets. So, I'm just wondering where we're going to go with this? Like, do we get public consultation? Can we move it? Who picked those streets? You know, when the resident starts screaming at me, I don't have the answers, and I'm not getting them when I ask. So, that's, that's two. I'll go to the number four, is the paving. You know, we're paving 29 streets, plus we're reconditioning four big projects. I've asked for a detailed account of what ward is getting how many meters. So, if it's Ward Six that I'm in, I'm getting two streets, am I getting 150 meters? So, then I can tell the residents, listen, we're getting our share, but this year, out of 29 streets, us getting two, plus there's 33 streets, I would like a detailed amount. And I would like that over the last eight years, because if we have the worst street-first program, that should be there. It should be very easy to access that data, you know, and then I could tell the residents, listen, we didn't get it this year, but we're on the, on the hook for next year. We're going to try to, try to even it all out. And you can't tell me that the worst first street is all downtown, or all in Ward 10, or all in Ward Seven, or, you know, we have to, you'll give to all our taxpayers. The taxpayers, they vote you in, they want a street, right? So, that's what I'm saying. Down to 20 seconds, one more question.
No, 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 you got a third question there. What's the third?
Fourth, fourth question, okay, is ditch infill program. I know our council didn't approve that this year, but what is the criteria that we have to do an elderly person's yard that can't cut his grass in his yard? This particular resident, you know, he asks me every year, I think he's spoken to the mayor, you know, what's the criteria? I keep saying, well, we're going to bring it up at Public Works. If it's a health issue, the man has a heart condition, and I know that if we do his, I'm going to get six other people wanting theirs done. So, where is the criteria, and can we, can we post that, and so they can look at it and say, well, Bob, you know, we can't give you that because of this reason. So, if you can summarize that in a few minutes, I'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay, Counsel Drong, thank you very much. Counsel McKee?
I think, let's go. Albert's with me, but we might, we'll tag if we need to. I think I'm pretty confident in answering most of these questions. Your active transportation, or your skunk and raccoon thing, that's going to have to be a council discussion. It's, you know, people like it, people don't. Our active transportation, you know, Counsel Drong, I have the same thing. I was so excited to be able to say that Stone Park was being connected through different streets last year, and then everyone was all rah rah, we want the AT, oh, we do, but we want it on the other side of the street. And, you know, I understand that residents are worried about some of their yard going. That's not their yard, that's city property, first of all, if we're coming across there with an active transportation trail. So, that's going to be the first thing you can let them know. The second thing is they look at things like lighting on a street, and they look at connectors where they're going to meet, and they look at infrastructure underneath, and they look at all these other factors that go into place when they're determining where it best suits. Albert, I am not an engineer, I'm a school counselor. If I'm not answering this correctly, you can jump in, but when I've asked these questions, and they make sense when you get the information. And, you know, we do maybe need to put something out so we can let people know. I don't think we can let residents determine. I think that's where we have to trust the experts who make these decisions where they best suit. Paving, I don't think, I think we need to take the politics out of paving altogether. My recommendation, and I'm hoping to bring to committee, is that we actually get, and I've spoken to CAO Mohammed on this, a real assessment around where our bad streets are in the city of Charlottetown. I used Counsel Matartz Ward for an example. If we have $500, $5 million to approve in paving, and Counsel Matartz Ward has 10 streets that are actually the worst is first in Charlottetown, then those streets need to be done. I think if we take care of our infrastructure and we really focus, similar to what we've done with the Sidewalk Master Plan, and we identify where these streets are, it's only going to help guide us in our budget process when we look at how much money we need to approve for these areas. How bad's the damage? What are we looking at? And I think that the fairest thing to do would be to have the proper assessment come in, spend a little money, get the data, determine where it is. But I don't think that it should be spread across wards or where it's most fair. I think it's where is it most needed. That's my own opinion. We will be discussing that at Public Works and bringing that back to council for discussion. Number three was criteria for, oh, the ditch infill. And I agree with you, I can certainly bring this up, of what is the criteria for a one-off? I don't even know where ditch infill falls. Does ditch infill fall with environment sustainability? Is it with Public Works? Like, every, another example of silos, you're absolutely right. You know, we haven't even clarified that we've stopped doing stormwater management ditch infilling for the residents. And if that's what we're stopping, we need to actually say that, and here's the reasons when we can look at helping you out in a certain situation. That's just.
And it's a, it's a Public Works issue. Anyways, and number four?
That was it.
That was it?
Did I do it?
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Counsel Drong.
Can I respond? Thank you. The active transportation pathways, the problem if we rely on experts, sometimes there's an expert in Toronto looking down, but, you know, it's time to move on if you're not listening to your residents. When the residents come to you and ask you, do not do this. If I said, hey, you know what, we're going to listen to experts, and they're going to determine where this transportation pathway goes, I may as well just take my hat off, throw it in the ditch, and say goodbye. I take the residents that voted for me and their information that they wanted. Like, an expert, we're dealing with the cycling people in the city, you know, I'm sure they wouldn't care if they were going up a different road, like Mount Edward or Broccoli. They don't really want to go in through the city, like, in through certain neighborhood streets. You know, there was a committee that picked these streets, there was only, I don't know how many would be involved, 20 or 30, and then they send this out to a higher power, maybe. But it's the, it's the down-to-earth, older people that say, please, Bob, don't take my yard. I know it's not their yard, and I mean, if you take it down my street, where my step is, I'm sure they could just do a left and come right up the stairs into my living room. So, you know, I'm kind of in with this group. I never asked for this, it was an expert that determined it's going down your street. I was happy at the first until I, until I looked at it and talked to the residents, so, and they don't want it. So, you know, I don't know how we're going to force it on people that have been living there 40, 50 years, because there's a user group that wants to come through that street. I mean, I understand if it's on Broccoli Point Road and needs a little more room so they can do it safely, I'm 100%, but I just won't go against what they say on the active transportation.
Counsel McKee, just one sec, he's not finished yet.
I know, I'm just.
And the eight-year, the eight-year plan that I've been waiting to be treated equally, you know, there was one year Counsel Bernard was Chair, and I was up in the top two or three or four. You know, I believe that we all should be treated fairly here. A worst-case-first street might be patched again and be given out next year. Like, everybody's in this together. We're representing our wards, and we fight for every ward. I mean, that's why you get in here, and I think that it should be treated equally. How can anyone go against being treated fairly and equal? You know, if it's my ward getting three this year, and yours, Counsel McKee, getting four, well, that's fine. Next year, I get four, and you get three, and then I can go to the residency. I'm doing my best, I'm asking them, they're paying attention, we're all getting treated. But if you go to the first worst, and you pave 50 streets downtown, and my residents and everybody else's residents in this room don't get their fair share, then they're going to be upset. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel McKee?
Yeah, the connecting streets, one of the criteria for your area, because, no offense, I asked too, why Centennial Drive was getting an active, and Lyle Lock, because both didn't make sense to me. And it was connectors to things where you are going to connect safely to get to things like parks, schools, so people around, you know, coming from Broccoli Point Road can safely connect up to Mulberry Park, which we know is a very busy park. We know that there's concern with Ash Drive and thruway traffic there. So, that was the justification given. It was to, it was to complete circles, to get people safely to public spaces. And, again, with, you know, our job as elected officials, and it goes back to what our role is, our role is policies, procedures, and budgets. And I appreciate that, you know, people expect us to be able to get them streets paved and expect them to make it fair, but I hope that we're all educating people about what our job is as elected people here, so that they're getting the right information and understanding that we don't determine those answers.
Counsel McKinnon, and then Counsel Matartz.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Counsel McKee, for your report. Did you want to ask for extra time now? I have about four.
We got two minutes left.
Okay. Chair, couple of questions. First, thank you for addressing the speed bumps. I'm getting over and over lots of questions of a speed bump. So, if a speed bump was already allocated to a spot, automatically it will go back there?
That's where they will be placing them, yes.
Okay. And, so it's not, if a new resident wants a speed bump somewhere, it's up to them to fill out the application? Okay, thank you. Hidden Valley, I've put two requests in for street signs and stop signs to be put up to Public Works, and it keeps getting put off. And I sent an email last week, who's the liability if there's a 911 call, if there's a fire, a workplace accident, they're not going to be able to find where it is. So, when can we get the street signs put up there and stop signs? Because the heavy equipment trucks are running through the intersections, they're coming up into Highfield, not stopping, cutting corners, and that, which leads to my next question, but I'll let you answer that one.
Are there people actually living in the Hidden Valley subdivision at this time?
There's, one house is almost to the finish work, they're painting it right now, so there's nobody living in it.
So, 911's not being called yet?
No, but if there's a workplace accident.
Let's get on that, yeah.
If there's a workplace accident, where, how are they going to get there?
Albert.
Okay. Trevor, another, Counsel McKinnon, another question?
So, which leads to where the trucks are cutting, running the stop signs, cutting corners, residents are concerned because there's deep ruts and tracks, our roads are narrow in Highfield subdivision. They want to know who's going to, who's responsible for fixing it, and when, when would this? Because, like, if you drive through Highfield right now and see where the trucks are not stopping, which goes to the police protective services as well for enforcement, but who would be, and when would they be cleaning this up?
Counsel McKee?
Frost was bad this year, so, you know, with the buses, with the trucks, they've created a little bit more of a ruckus than, and more of a mess, and that's what's happening, is that they're going to be on the list to get cleaned up, they're going to have to wait till the crews get there. There's two crews per, or there's a crew for every two wards that are out now working, and like I said, they've been doing a great job, so they'll get there. If it's something with a lot of development and stuff happening, I would probably ask or request to see if someone could do an assessment to see if there could be something in place to help curb some of that damage. I know that's happening over in some of the developing areas where I am too. And sometimes it's just a matter of being, it's disruptive when there's development, and unfortunately, we just have to sometimes endorse on the bus until we get there, but it will be fixed.
Counsel, Counsel McKinnon?
Chair, one more question. In regards to the ditch infill program, I'm getting several, and I agree, it's, there's no criteria in place to, or to get on the program, or if it has been canceled officially, put it out to the public to let the public know that we don't do that anymore. But I'm ongoing where I do have seniors, again, they can't cut their ditches, they would like to have their ditches infilled. I have another resident, cattails are growing continuously in their front yard because the water is not running away, so they would like to have it infilled, so, I guess, and I'm not sure where that falls under which silo, but where.
Public Works. Counsel, Counsel McKee?
Thank you.
Albert, you might have to help me with this one. I would assume that if their ditch isn't filled, that the water probably runs into their ditch, which would probably be a good thing, and which is one of the reasons why they've stopped doing the ditch infill program anyway, because of all the problems that have happened as a result. Would you like to speak to those last two?
Just before Albert speaks, we need to extend the meeting, so it doesn't require unanimous vote. So, I don't want to put a resolution, do I, Trezey, on the floor? No. Okay, are we in favor of going on, moving on? Please put your hand up.
Hold it on.
Okay, 9-0. Okay, Albert, we got the extended time, overtime period, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, and Counsel McKee. In regards to the ditch infill program, I will have to go back and look into that. As far as I know, that program, I know we're not doing it right now. Any property that, you know, has a ditch, the only time we're infilling it is if we're going in and putting a multi-use path or a sidewalk or other infrastructure that we have to do that requires that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Counsel Matartz, been waiting patiently.
No, thank you.
Yes, Counsel Matartz, go right ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. Chair McKee, it's just a quick question for my own understanding. We talked a lot about paving, worst first. My question is, does the city do an actual assessment of all the streets across Charlottetown on a continual basis to determine what that worst refers? Or does that come in based on the feedback that the councilors are providing, or the public that's calling in? Like, how is that done? Because, I mean, I know I can drive through my own ward, and I can pick 10 streets myself very easily that I interpret to be in desperate need of resurfacing or repair of some sort. Is there, is that the mandate of the city to actually drive through and look at that worst first? And if you could answer that, just, it's just a, for me, my understanding.
Am I allowed to stand up?
Yep, Counsel McKee, and Albert is waiting too. Oh, you're all ready?
Albert is not waiting. And yes, there is a criteria, and yes, there is staff that go around and determine, but I think what's happened in the past, and we've heard it, is that it's been tried to be kept fairly amongst areas, and we only have so much money, which is why I want to bring back real data collection at the end of the day, to take the politic part of it out of it, and to really determine what streets. Because what we determine, I mean, I've learned a lot, frost heaves, roads, different things happen, and then things will go back to normal, and a little patch job here will at least suffice, because it's not underneath, what's going, happening underneath the asphalt, but this new assessment we might be able to look at can determine what's really happening underneath and really determine where are the priorities as far as infrastructure. But yes, there is criteria, to answer your question.
Oh, great, thank you. It was more to just how to address that concern by the constituents as to how certain roads are being picked, where, when, why, versus the one that they're staring at that is, nothing's being done to it. And I don't travel that street every day, so it's hard to defend that that doesn't need to be done. If someone's determined they're driving up and down there and it's just the whole way, then I'm sure it is. And, you know, it only takes a minute to get in your car and drive up and down the street to determine that. But then you push it forward and it's, well, how does that move somewhere? So, thank you, I appreciate the, the explanation on that.
Councillor McCabe?
And I appreciate, you know, I, I think we see that all over, and I know sometimes roads are deferred because there's development happening, there's going to be big trucks on these roads, and there's lots of different reasons when they're coming up. I would just, again, I'm always about if we can tie it back to a criteria and there's, and there's data to prove why, then we should be able to go with that, so, I'm hoping to improve that.
Councillor Twill?
In terms of street paving, I, as a member of the committee, have been asking for the criteria. We, we, I haven't received the criteria as to, you know, what the thought process is from an analytical perspective as to how streets are picked, but there's no doubt about it, we have a lot of neighborhood streets that are being totally neglected and, and, need to be paved, and, and I, I agree with councillor Duran, I think it needs to be done equally and fairly across the boards. Some people could see progress being made in their respective communities, because what I see over the last number of years is simply not working. So, anyway, I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I'll draw your attention to page four with regards to the skunk and raccoon trappings. Public Works Committee recommends the city cease the skunk and raccoon trappings program, instead provide information to residents on how to manage pest control and who to contact when they require professional services, which is in line with municipalities across Canada. Vote was two one, councillor Twill opposed. I definitely opposed. In fact, I was the one that advocated adding the raccoon component to the program a number of years ago. I have not heard any complaints regarding the program. In fact, what I have received is positive feedback. Residents in, in, in the various neighborhoods that, that I'm involved with are very appreciative of the program, and it's a big asset. So, regardless of what happens across Canada, they don't have a, a raccoon and skunk program, well, maybe they should have one. Maybe there's things that they're doing that, that we don't do, so, I don't use that as a litmus test as to, to eliminate the program. A strong promoter and advocate of the program and to remain, to maintain the status quo. So, I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention as well. And, you know, regarding the active transportation pathway, advocated for the last four years, the pathway in Tara's Road, we're getting it this year, thanks to all members of city council supporting that. You know, I've, I've advocated moving it up, to have it done as soon as possible. People want that, that venue constructed there, people living in the older part of Sherwood, people living in the development right beside it and across the street from it, so that it truly is safe and secure. So, you know, pathways, as councillor Duran talked about in, in certain neighborhoods, these active transportation pathways, we have main entrances into the city. I'll use Mount Edward Road as a case in point, especially now with this new development that's being talked about. We've, we've got to have that infrastructure. These are main entrances into the city that are simply not safe for the people living on the west side of Mount Edward Road. And councillor Duran, I appreciate your support for that, to, to have, have that, that, that infrastructure constructed there. So, we need, we need to have those philosophical discussions as to where they should go and not go. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councillor Matar?
Thank you, your worship. Just a couple of comments. The worst first street was brought in a number of years ago, your worship, and there is real data on that, there's been real data for the last eight to 10 years. So, and staff created the criteria for that, so I don't know if you're changing some of the criteria, but anyway, that's, that's fine. But I think the argument at that time was, because to do it in each ward and have the same amount of money in each ward, you're paving streets that don't need to be paved over streets that need to be paved, but you're saying, you know, there's two in this ward and there's two in this ward. The whole idea was to take politics out of it and get, get the streets that need to be paved, paved. The other thing is, I, I believe there always was anyway in the Public Works budget, when you're looking at ditches to be filled in, there was money there for safety issues or a health issue, at least, at least there always used to be so. If someone like, has a heart issue and can't mull the ditch or whatever, that, that's where staff would look at that, and so there was, there was a budget there for that. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Duran, or councillor McCabe, do you want to address that? Go ahead.
I don't think we specifically put money in for that unless, and we can look into it more, there might have been stormwater management money, but I don't think it was specifically for, yeah, so, yeah, I don't think it was specifically specified in our budget this year.
Okay, councillor Duran?
To reply to councillor Bernard there, I know, I know, you know, worst first, but let's be fair, nobody in this chamber can ever say we're against being fair. I mean, you have some of the nicest streets and most sidewalks in all of the city, you know, I, I want what's fair. I mean, it, it's pretty, pretty easy to, to say worst first, but until we get, you know, some supercomputer saying that, you know, this is wrong or that's wrong, you know, let, let's just make it fair, that's all I'm asking. You know, if we play by the rules, make it fair for everyone, everybody in the city would be happy. You know, it's, it's plain and simple.
Councillor Matar?
I, I thank you, your worship. I just heard on CBC the other morning, our manager Scott Adams giving the update on how the criteria was done for worst-first streets. And I, I know, I know what councillor Duran is saying, it, but that's a very difficult process to be able to do and get the worst first. I think the problem becomes if we're not getting enough streets done, then there needs to be more money put in the asphalt budget to be able to come down that worst-first list more. But there's been years where councillor Duran, you've gotten more streets than other councillors and there weren't. Like, that's going to happen from year to year. Well.
He did most.
Okay. Anyways, no, 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 just, just keep finishing.
But if, if you look at the program, you look the way it's set up and you go back a few years, you'll see that different councillors are getting more streets than others because of the system. Last year I had one, one street.
Okay.
Oh, then look at the list. I mean, the list.
Yeah, no, let, let him speak there, just, okay. Councillor Yankoff? Hold on, excuse me. Deputy Mayor? Can you get out there, deputy? Are you all right?
Yep. Huh. I know, lots of cords and stuff from these tablets. Thank you for your report, councillor McCabe. To circle back on the skunk and raccoon, I, I tend to agree with councillor Twill. I think that, I think that we should continue with the program, perhaps we need to reevaluate the service provider, maybe it's time that we change it up, because what I'm hearing is that it was a program that was working well, and then the service provider changed up, and from what I can tell in my research, they're not, they, they may have a local number and a local, but they're not, they're not really, they're not here. I don't think they have a stationary address here, so I think it's a bit problematic, maybe they can't get their traps out as, as quickly. So, my suggestion would be that I ask the committee, look at reevaluating who is providing that service, and maybe that go back out to tender.
I think that's a great idea, and we'll have it added. Albert, could you make sure we have that added, just on that recommendation for further discussion? Thank you.
Okay, let's, can we go to the resolutions?
My one question on that.
On, on what, the skunks? Oh, you wanted, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Are, are we not under contract for that now? I mean, I, I know when, when, so we're just going to break and go to tender again?
Look.
So, we, we get lots of paving that we could break and go to tender?
No, 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 no.
Are we starting this process?
I, I didn't know that this was voted on, I just saw the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
So, we'll have to go back to Public Works for discussion, and the management team will have to provide the contract. You're right, we have a contract.
Thank you.
Now, we can break that contract if we want to renegotiate with another contractor, I think that's something we have to look at. However, that, that.
How can you do that?
I think probably.
Just, just, just one sec, let me finish.
How, how can you do that? And else, the contractor's not fulfilling the contract.
You can pay out a contract, you can pay out a contract if you wish, if you're not satisfied with the service, but that's a discussion we'll have when it goes back to Public Works.
Thank you.
So, we haven't done anything until the committee gives direction to management. Councillor Twill?
Yeah. Just, again, on, on, on street paving, you know what, I've said it before, it wouldn't matter if we added another five million, you know, get it on the list. You know, that's why, again, we're going to reiterate, I talked about the criteria, looking at the criteria. We've got neighborhood streets in the historical part of the city, the streets are horrendous, and there's no need of it, and, and I don't understand this so-called worst first, because if it was truly worst first, these streets would have been paved long ago, so.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, I just wanted to circle back on the whole skunk and raccoon removal. I'm just going by the minutes where the committee has recommended, or staff has recommended to discontinue the service. Well, if you're discontinuing, you're, you're, you're breaching a contract.
Yeah.
All I meant was, let's have a look at it, maybe there's six months left in the contract and we reevaluate it then. I wasn't saying to cancel any contracts, so I wanted to be crystal clear, I just said for us to have some further discussion around going forward.
A revisit, yeah.
Thank you.
And it was a staff recommendation. Thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Chair, councillor Bernard?
Okay. Councillor Yankoff basically said it. I was going to say, we just can't, I, I assume when I read that, that it was talking about not renewing, but you're going to let the contract run out, we're not just going to cancel the contract. You have to have reasons to do that.
We have to look at it, yeah.
But that's what I assume, it's, it's when the contract runs out, whether you want to renew or not, yeah, okay, thanks.
And just before we close the discussion, I know the Old Protestant Cemetery falls under Public Works. The neighbors around there have been asking, when do we plan to go in there to clean up those trees? Those trees are falling all over the place. I know there was a committee, an Old Protestant Cemetery Committee, I don't know if they're still operational, but I think we have to take a hard look at what's going on there. Councillor Twill, you probably have something to add?
Yeah. You know, I brought this up, two subsequent Public Works Committee meetings regarding the, the Old Protestant Cemetery.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm, I'm told that, you know, even at our last meeting, that, you know, we've got nothing to do with it, we only do maintenance, and it's up to, it's up to, you know, the committee, which, what I believe is, is really beyond their scope and, and their capacity to be able to deal with, you know, the aftermath of Fiona, a storm of that magnitude, and, you know, I, I really believe that the city should be, should be in there. I mean, we've got complaints from the neighbors, yes, I've sent emails in, and to, to just, just put our hands up and say, you know, we, we've got nothing to do with it, we only hire someone just to cut the grass.
Yeah.
That's simply not good enough. We do have a responsibility to work with that, that committee, we've done a good job working with that committee over the last, since the inception of that committee, but I mean, you drive down University Avenue, you, you look at all the fallen trees and whatever, whatever, I mean, it's going to take a lot of work to get that cleaned up and to get those trees cut down and the limbs cut down and.
It's the oldest cemetery in the city.
It's the oldest cemetery, I think, of Prince of Rhode Island.
Well, city for sure.
The cemetery?
No, 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 it falls, now, hold on, Public Works Beautification in the past has worked with the Old Protestant Burial Ground Committee in taking care of that property, so it's always fallen, it's always been under Public Works, so I think we have to reach out to the committee that, I don't know who's there right now, and find out what their plan is, but that is an historic graveyard where some of the fathers of Confederation have been buried. And I think we got a couple of resolutions, correct? Everything's quiet. CAO, Eleanor, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by councillor Julie McCabe, seconded by councillor John McAllier. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for proposals for engineering services for North River Road master plan, the submission of WSP Canada in the amount of $58,035 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Councillor Ranty?
Thank you very much for that. Councillor McCabe, maybe we can go to Albert, but it, these are just going to be designed because that's my ward from Capital Drive right in to McGill, mine, and then you cross over to councillor Beck's. Is it going to be input from the public on that, or are you just going to come in with a, a whole new set of plans and say, this is what we're doing on North River Road?
I'm, I'm reading this, I'm assuming it's design, and I know that they've been good to have public consultation information sessions. We are working on that through the CAO administration to determine when and how we have to have these public meetings. I mean, everybody wants a public meeting for everything, so we're going to have to hire new staff to have the public meetings for all the things that we're trying to do in the city, because by the time we get around to doing it, we need to do all new plans after we do 15 meetings to give public information and come back.
No, I'm not looking, I, I, I'm just saying, the residents could be informed once the plans are in. Like, I don't want to go any, I, I don't want to go to any more public meetings than you do, but, but that's all I'm just saying.
With this, with this, this, when it's ready to go to the fruitation, would that qualify for a public meeting?
Same as Lailak and Cedar.
Yeah, tha, thanks, your worship. Thanks councillor McCabe, yeah.
Well, they, they're going to have to explain it to them. Councillor Matar, did you have a question?
No, he's just going to answer.
Okay, go ahead there, sir.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, basically, this is similar to the University Avenue Master Plan, so, once we have a conceptual design and we have some rough ideas of what we want to do through this area, then we'll bring it back to council, and then we can go, just like we did for the University Avenue Master Plan, get feedback, and then it's going to be, again, a phased construction plan, depending on where we start or where we go or what we get back.
No, that's all I was wondering, like, you know, be, be.